See you, honey. All right, excuse me. Okay.
I'm going to call these special meeting of the Board of Alderman to order at 7:00 PM on Thursday, July 1st here in the Aldermanic Chamber and as well as via Zoom teleconference. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Lovering and Alderman Schmidt will lead us in the Pledge to the Flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To join by Zoom, please refer to the agenda or the website for the meeting link and telephone number. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please indicate if participating via Zoom state why you're not meeting in person and whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting which was required under the right to know law. The clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
I am present in the chamber.
Alderman Cleve.
I am here and in the chamber.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Alderman Dowd.
I am present and I'm in the chamber.
Alderman Karen.
I am here and in the chamber.
Alderman Clemmons.
Alderman Lopez.
Alderman Tenza.
I am present via Zoom. I am attending virtually because I had some unexpected childcare issues come up. I'm alone in the room and I can hear everyone.
Alderwoman Lou.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
I'm here in the chamber.
Alderman Laws.
Alderman Cleaver.
Present via Zoom because of medical issues.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
I'm present in the chamber.
Alderman Mulsia.
I am here.
You have eight in physically in attendance, two via Zoom, for a total of 10 in attendance.
Thank you. Also with us this evening is Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. I am going to turn the public hearing over to Alderman-at-Large Mike O'Brien, Chair of the Infrastructure Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. We're going to have a public hearing for tonight to which I will call forward people to give testimony in favor and then after we hear the testimony in favor, we go to testimony in opposition. I will then ask again for testimony in favor for those that may not have had the opportunity to speak the first time. And again, then I will call at the conclusion of that testimony in opposition. I'm going to tell our guests, when you do come up to the microphone to give your testimony, please state your name and your address for the record and that way the clerk can record your statements. Right now before us this evening is a petition for the street layout at 44 Buck Meadow Road. The main petitioner is Alderman Dowd. And Alderman Dowd, can you give us a brief on your petition, please?
Yes. We're currently, this is the piece of property that ties in the larger property we bought for the access road to the new school to the actual school property. And we're following a parallel path. Actually, we're having fairly good negotiations with the owners at the current time, but in a parallel path due to the urgency of the school being built, we're also following a path of possible taking if necessary. And when you do that, you have to have a reason for taking that land. And this establishes the fact that we are building an access road to the school. I think I've covered that all.
Thank you, Alderman Dowd. At this time, I'll call testimony in favor. Anybody from the public would like to give their testimony in favor? Please step up to the microphone. Anybody that is on Zoom? Not seeing anybody? I will now close the testimony in favor and open up the testimony in opposition. Is there anybody present in the chamber that would like to get up and give testimony in opposition?
Laura Cahoon.
Okay. Ms. Cahoon, are you speaking in favor or opposition?
Opposition.
Opposition? Okay. Ms. Cahoon, can you give your address? Your name, please? And also keep in mind, to all people who are speaking, there will be a three-minute time limit. So, okay, Ms. Cahoon, you may go.
My name is Laura Cahoon. I live at 30 Greenwood Drive. I am against this petition for the street outlay on 44 Buck Meadow Road. Both the mayor and this board just keep pushing things down the throats of the Nashua residents and the residents have had enough. There is no mention of a price for the city will be paying for this section. Maybe the property owner will be giving the land free. It is a great deal for him because he gets a road right through his property and the tab will be picked up by the Nashua taxpayers. Not a bad deal because he's only paying $83.79 a year in property taxes for his 13.18 acres of land. Taxpayers even got stuck with the $4,000 appraisal bill for this land. It seems like a no-win situation for the Nashua taxpayer. Problem I have is that the mayor and the board have pushed the $118 million new school down our throats, the other land purchase of $370,000, and now this piece of land. There's still no mention of how much this road is going to cost the taxpayers. The residents are not stupid and after all this, the residents and the taxpayers will have to pay for furniture and fixtures of this school. How many millions of dollars will that be? Our mayor has not mentioned that portion of the bill yet because he has to come up with a way he can blame the state. Our mayor keeps blaming the state, however, it is his overspending that is killing the Nashua taxpayer. Alderman Dowd has signed this as a petitioner, however, he should be noted that on several occasion, Alderman Dowd has showed that he has little regard for the Nashua taxpayer. Does anybody know what the actual student attendance will be next year? We had approximately 900 students that went out of public schools. Has anybody asked what the actual count is currently coming back to our schools? The Nashua mayor keeps telling the residents that our tax problem is the state. However, the Nashua taxpayers' problem is our mayor and the Board of Alderman spending. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now call any further testimony, if anybody would like to come forward in opposition.
Lori Ordolano.
Ms. Ordolano, okay, please state your name for the record and just to remind you, you do have a three-minute window, okay?
Yes.
All right, please go.
Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. I don't know if, at this hearing, do you answer questions or is it not allowed?
It's the tradition of the board just to listen to your testimony.
Okay, so I guess I don't know where I fall out on this because I would have the question, because I don't recall when the school bond was voted on, whether this was always included as part of the project. So if this road had always been put in as part of the project, although it wouldn't have been in the bond because it's separate, but if it was identified, it would be helpful for me to know that and it's not something that's being secondarily added to the budget. Also, I want to make you aware of the person doing the appraisal. I believe is a gentleman named Vern Gardner who was the person responsible for the appraisal with the Board of Tax and Land Appeal on my property. And I'm filing a formal complaint with the Office of License and Certification against this individual. I saw the appraisal he did on another parcel of property for Sarah Marshon over at the school, the last one that was bought. And I emailed her and said, I thought that appraisal was really poorly done because the parcels of lands he used as a comp to identify comparables did not, they were parcels in Hollis and it actually didn't call out a landmarking or ID that you could look up and actually see how the proposal or how the appraisal was built. I am not in favor of the city contracting any work to him and the legal office also gave him two terradyne pieces of property to work the appraisals on. So if you're working with him to do an estimate for, you know, eminent domain or taking of the property or coming up with an estimate, I want to see that appraisal and I wonder if you've seen that appraisal yet. But I'm not in favor of using people who I think are corrupt, who I think should not be certified. I think the city and the legal office should be able to do a better job of picking appraisers that have a better reputation. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam. Okay, I will call again. Anybody present or on Zoom would like the opportunity to offer testimony in opposition? Thank you, sir. Please state your name for the record and just to remind you, you do have three minutes.
Yes, good evening. Thank you very much. My name is Morgan Hollis. I'm an attorney at Nashua, 39 East Pearl Street in Nashua with a law firm, A Goddessman and Hollis. And I'm representing Michael and Paul Gagnon in the hearing this evening. The Gagnon's own lot, C25, on Tax Maps, which has been described as an hourglass-shaped lot and the proposed layout of the road goes right through the very center of their property, in effect dividing the parcel into, the single parcel into two parcels. The appraisal that's been referenced has been received as well as notice from the city of an offer. We have been in negotiations with the city and we're probably a good ways down the path. There's disagreement about what would happen if this road is laid out. And the reason I raise that, it's the most important part for all of you, is that our engineer has indicated that the road as preliminary laid out doesn't meet any of the city requirements. So there's a ways to go to see if a road can actually be designed there that meets the requirements. There are issues with steepness of the road, meeting the city requirements, there's curvature of the road and there's sight distance. If, for example, the road has to be redesigned and cannot be met to meet city standards and for some reason becomes a private way, then this whole layout is completely incorrect and the appraisal that it's based upon is incorrect. If another design has to be made and as a result of the particular width of the area of the roadway, either lot is left with inadequate frontage to provide adequate access to the two separated parcels, then each of those parcels will have significant adverse impact on their values. The appraisal, while it is stated in one scenario, the taking would have zero impact. In the other scenario, it has a very significant impact of well over $200,000. We believe the appraisal is incorrect in that it uses as a comparable Hollis property which has a two-acre minimum of development. And of course, you know, in Nashua, it is a much smaller lot area required for minimum development. Even the appraisal says you could probably get 10 acres on the southeast portion and the northwest portion, which may end up being taken in its entirety or be rendered valueless by the layout of the road, is bigger. And although they give it less value...
30 seconds.
So I'm here this evening to speak out against that I think the layout is premature. I understand you have a process to go through, but I think it's important for the Alderman to understand there is no design of this road yet and yet you're moving forward with a layout of it. And the layout of that determines what happens. So I'm happy to answer any questions or if the chair wants to extend the time, I'll be happy to discuss it more. It's a pretty significant issue for my clients. It's 27 acres of land. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, again, I'm asking, we don't traditionally have a question and answer period, so we're back to testimony in opposition. Is anybody present that would like to speak in opposition?
Alderman O'Brien, this is Lori Ordolano.
Yes, but, yes, you already spoke, correct?
I did. There's a second time, a second round, correct?
There is a second round, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, anybody else in testimony in opposition? Okay, seeing none, I will close the testimony in opposition. I also would like to welcome members of Aldermanic Board who just came in, Alderman Lopez and Alderman Laws. Am I correct with the clerk? Those are the two that came in? So, welcome, okay. Since we closed the testimony in opposition, I will now open up testimony in favor again. Anybody would like to come forward and offer testimony in favor? Seeing none? Anybody? I don't see anybody on Zoom, so therefore we'll close the testimony in favor. And I will conclude that and now open up the testimony in opposition. Is anybody would like to come forward and speak in opposition?
Lori Ordolano.
Okay, Ms. Ordolano, you do know the same rules apply? State your name in the three minutes. Thank you. All right, you may go.
Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. I think you're putting the cart before the horse on this one. You know, I really think you need to get your appraisal hammered out a lot better. And it concerns me, you know, Ms. Cahoon put in a right to know to get a copy of that appraisal to review it and of course it didn't come to her because you used the five-day waiting period. I really think somebody should have had that appraisal in her hand immediately, that day somebody could have sent it so she could look at it because obviously you have it. I would have liked to have seen it too. I'm concerned with this gentleman you're using to do the appraisal. I don't trust his work and we're paying him $4,000 for it. He used Hollis parcels of property on the last appraisal he did over there at the school that were not well identified or trackable and did not seem to be good comparables. And I'm now piqued, my interest is piqued after listening to Attorney Hollis to see if he used the same parcels to go and produce an appraisal for this piece of land. You know, the property owner deserves a fair process and I'm not in favor of just taking the land by any means. But if you don't have a viable layout and you don't have a good appraisal, you should put the brakes on this and get your homework done first before you come forward and ask for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ordolano. Anybody else?
Laura Cahoon.
Okay, Ms. Cahoon, you do know same rules apply? State your name for the record and the three-minute time limit. You may begin.
Laura Cahoon, 30 Greenwood Drive. I'm a little bit shocked by what the attorney has said because I'm looking at the property card and currently via what they say, the appraisal value on the square footage, which is, we're taking 7,512 square feet, which the value on the property card as the appraisal figure is $5,970. However, we are currently assessing this property because it's under current use for $83.79 a year. So I would like to make sure that before we did anything like this, that we would have all the facts and figures so that we know what we really should be paying for this property. Because obviously, right now, the taxpayers are getting screwed because we're not getting any money in property taxes on it. So I would like to get the numbers before we go ahead with this kind of deal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cahoon. Okay, anybody else with any testimony in opposition?
Thank you again.
State your, same rules apply, your name for the record and three minutes, please.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm just going to be brief. I think I covered my points. My point in being here this evening for my clients is really just to point out, A, we are in negotiations with the city, although it didn't start as long ago as they may have liked. But we are reaching a point, but there are very important issues. And before the city walks down the line of laying out a roadway and doing a land taking, I just want to call out these very important issues. That is, can this road even be built? And if it is, what is the layout and what is the impact? And as we stand here today, we don't know. You're asking to lay out a road, it's a petition to lay out a road, that you don't know where it's going to be. And I think it is premature. I think we'll probably get there if a road can be laid out, but there are a lot of steps along the way. And then the second point was just simply to raise the issue that we, when and if there is an agreement that a road can be built and you need to take this property and lay out a road, there will be a discussion about values. And what may have been led, what you may have been led to believe is that there is no impact on this property if there's a public way put in there is false. There is an impact on the property, there will be a cost, and if it's not a right of way, it'll be a significant cost. And we disagree with the values that have been raised in the appraiser by a significant margin. So I just want the board to realize that. You're going to go on your track, but it's got to be on the public record as we proceed forward of a concern of my client. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, again, I will call for any further testimony in opposition? Seeing none? I will close the testimony in opposition. At this time, I will close the public hearing on the petition of street layout at 44 Buck Meadow Road at...
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes. I was going to get to you next after I close that, the hearing, and then take the correspondence. Technicality. Would you like to do it now? We can, I think at this point, we could go either way.
If you close the public hearing, I think all action is done. Corporation Counsel, no? All right, you can close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing and the public hearing is closed. Now you can take up the petition, discuss it and either approve it or not. Thank you, Corporate Counsel. It's a technicality, I know, but we're coming right to you, Alderman Dowd. Yes, indeedy. At this particular time, I will close the public hearing on the petition for street layout of 44 Buck Meadow Road at 7:21 PM. Alderman Dowd, do you have a correspondence that you would like to submit without objection at this late, when the agenda was already filed?
Yes, there was a correspondence that was received after the agenda was prepared. It's from Attorney Celia Leonard in the Corporation Counsel's office and like to move to accept and place on file.
Okay, the motion is to accept the correspondence from Assistant Corporate Counsel Celia Leonard. Call the question. All those in favors signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose?
Just for point of record, if we have Alderman on Zoom, do we have to do it by roll call? Sorry.
Yes.
Roll call.
Okay, then could the clerk please call the roll, please?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Cleve?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Laws? Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright?
Yes.
Alderman Mulsia?
Yes.
We have 11 ayes and zero nays.
At this particular time, we're open to further amendments. Is there a second amendment to that, Alderman Dowd?
No, there is a motion.
Could you please state your amendment?
There is a motion.
There's a motion, excuse me.
And I'd like to speak to it.
Mr. Chairman, point of order?
Yes.
So my understanding is that this is a public hearing? That's what was noticed and it sounds like we're going into a meeting and I'm wondering if through you to Corporate Counsel...
As Chair, I disagree because this item that we're discussing is germane to the 44 Buck Meadow and it's a vice from our own, you know, Corporate Counsel on the particular matter that we should take under consideration. So I feel that it is germane and it is related to the hearing. Unfortunately, it came late, you know, these things sometimes do happen, would have liked to seen it earlier, but it is important. So I do, I do would like to, before we move on to the meat, the next part, we're going to discuss this again at the full board. This will be on record so it could be discussed again at that particular time.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely. Alderman.
So I understand that we've received correspondence and we've accepted it and placed it on file. You know, now it sounds like somebody's going to make a motion. And I'm just wondering if I could ask Corporate Counsel, you know, are we okay with this? You know, shouldn't this be noticed? Shouldn't there be an agenda item? Shouldn't there, you know, we're moving from the public hearing into a meeting of, I don't know what, the Infrastructure Committee or the full board? I'm not sure what we're doing. And I understand it was referred to the Committee on Infrastructure, but we're, it seemed to be...
Well, okay, but if you, I think I'll allow your...
Could I ask Corporate Counsel?
Yeah, right. I think we'll allow your questions to, I do have an answer to that, but we'll let Corporate Counsel answer that.
Thank you.
Please. You're at a properly noticed Special Board of Alderman meeting. Any matter can properly be brought up. There's no requirement in state law that the agenda, in fact, there's no requirement in state law that there be an agenda, but there's certainly not any requirement in state law that the agenda has to cover in detail all matters that can be brought up. I mean, it was clear that there was going to be a public hearing on the petition for street layout. It's not beyond comprehension that the next matter taken up would be the petition for street layout. So if that's what is proposed to be done, I see no infirmity there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Jettie. Fine. Thank you, sir. Okay, Alderman Dowd, you are recognized for your motion.
Yes. The volume's a little high on the mics.
Okay.
Okay.
Bear with me. It likes to hum. Okay. How's that?
Okay. I'm going to make a motion, then I'd like to talk to it. I moved, after considering the public need for a new road to a new school, the cost of the road and the impact on the owners of the land over which the new road is proposed to be built, that there is a public interest in an occasion which require the city lay out a new highway as presented in the petition. And I'd like to speak to it.
Alderman Dowd, do you want to allow to speak on your motion?
Yes. The intent of this whole petition is to verify the need for the road. It has nothing to do with the taking. We're not forming the taking by this and it's just part of the process as has been worked out with, by Attorney Leonard, who is Deputy Corporation Counsel. And Attorney Leonard is negotiating with Attorney Hollis on the preferred method of negotiating with them on the purchase of the property. This is just in case, we have to verify that the reason that we need this property is because it's a road to the new school. We acquired the other piece of property and obviously it connects to the school property and we have to go through this piece. So we're working with the owners of the property to negotiate. It's our intent to try and meet all the requirements that they're asking for. And I believe that Attorney Leonard is making sure that happens. We're not approving the design of the road at this point. The preliminary design of the road was laid out to just give an idea where the road's going to go. We have not only the engineers from Harriman and the construction company of Harvey that will do the final design of the road, but also Dan Hudson and Roger Houston, Roger Houston, Husband, Wayne Husband, sorry, that are working on this. So that the road, it will be a public street. It is not going to be a private drive or anything else. It's going to be a public street and it's going to meet all the requirements of a city of Nashua street, including any grading or grades or sidewalks and everything. It will meet all the requirements of a city street. And the original layout that was given for the access to the two parts of the property was just a preliminary to show that where they could go. It is not final by any means. We have a meeting tomorrow with all the engineers and we're going to be discussing the questions that were presented by Attorney Hollis. And it's not our intent to... And it's not our intent to arbitrarily take this. We're going to try and negotiate and purchase this. It's just that because of the timing constraints on building the new school, and in that case, not causing the city of Texas to have any additional funds, because time is money, as we all know, we are doing the parallel path. But it's our intent, and it's our desire, to work with the owners to meet all the requirements and make sure that they're happy and that we all come to an agreement and have a purchase and sale. And this is just a minor part of the thing that we're saying. All we're saying by this motion is that there is a need for the road to the new school. That's it. We're not approving the design of the road, because trust me, it's not done yet. This is a preliminary layout. All we're doing is saying that there is a need for a road. And we have a new school we're building. And we have to have a road to it that is in accordance with all of the requirements that we've already set forth with the fire department, the police department, the Board of Public Works, and several other departments in the city, it seems. So if you have any questions, I'd be willing to answer them.
Okay, the motion has been made, the pending motion has been made, and open for further discussion. Alderman Clea?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I may, to Alderman Dowd. If I understood you correctly, this is just, I want to call it a paper chase. This is just to get on the record that we need this road.
Yes.
So that if negotiations did not go as all parties hope, then we could move forward to what other actions need to be taken. Is that correct?
If in a worst-case scenario, we had to go forth with a taking, the courts would want to know, is there a need for taking the land? The road is the need. All we're doing here is addressing that, yes, there is a need to have the road to go to the school.
So I can.
Follow-up, yes.
Thank you, so again, I'm just saying is that this is just to put it into the public record that there is a need for it.
Yes.
This is not an intent that we're going in this direction, just.
No, no.
That we have to put a need in, so I refer to it as a paper chase, just to.
Our preferred method is.
Keep our checkmarks going.
Yeah, our preferred method is to negotiate with the owners and meet and satisfy all their requirements. I would also state that the funding for this and the other piece of property we bought were always in the bond. There is no additional funds being spent on the acquisition of this land.
Thank you.
Okay, open up for further discussion. Alderman Jettie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, you know, I'll be completely honest with you. I thought this was just a formality. I thought you had, you know, everything, you know, that everything had already been decided. I'm surprised to hear the owners, you know, through their attorney expressing opposition to this. So I'm not fully, I'm not sure I fully understand. You know, perhaps, again, perhaps attorney Bolton could help me understand. When we lay out a road, I thought that we described, you know, by meets and bounds, you know, the property that was where the road was going to be. I don't know if this, if this description, I didn't really look at it carefully. I thought, I didn't know that there was going to be any controversy. Does this, does this description describe the property on which the road is going to be located? Or does it describe where the road is going to be?
Do you want me to answer that, or do you want corporation counsel to answer?
I guess first I'd like to ask corporation counsel, when we lay out a road, don't we have to describe where the road is going to be?
Attorney Bolton?
You don't have to have the actual final construction design. You have to generally provide that it's going from point A to point B. You may well want to describe, in an appropriate case, that it's going to go from point A to point B and avoid point C on the way, or make sure you come within so much distance of point D. But you don't have to be exacting in detail of exactly where it will be and to a final design, final construction standard. I think the best example of this that probably people can remember is when the Broad Street Parkway and Associated Bridge was laid out. The original layout talked about a four-lane way. And prior to it getting built, those actual specifications were changed and it's two lanes as originally constructed. There was no amended layout, there was no doing the layout over. It was adequate the way it was. So the answer is no, you don't have to have it by actual meets and bounds. And it's our opinion that for the purpose of this petition, the description is adequate.
Okay.
Alderman Dowd?
If I may add to that, the metes and bounds that you have in there, when, if it ever went to a taking, you would have to only be able to take the land you need. So when the road was given a preliminary design look at by Harriman and the city, the city engineer and Wayne, that we could only take the land that we absolutely needed. And the metes and bounds are that, not just the road. That when it has slopes and has easements for utilities that they may want to bring down someday. And I don't know if, you probably haven't had the question answered, but we are allowing an easement over a school property to bring the utilities to the edge of the school property. I think that was one of your questions. There were, the questions that have been asked by the owners through attorney Hollis are the same questions and concerns that we have being a school road. Sightlines, grading, I mean, we're going to have school buses going up and down there. Of course, we want to make sure that it's safe. And when the, and we also didn't want to do the final design because the final design gets very expensive when you're doing final design drawings. So that, they have not been done yet. We just did that initial layout for a number of requirements we had to do for the state and the city. And when the final design is done, there will be no sightline issues. There will be no issues with the access roads that we're talking about. And there will be no grading issues. All of that will be taken into account. So again, this motion, all it is doing is putting in record that there is a need for this road. We still have to negotiate with the owners. We still have to do a final design. It will come, probably come before the board again on the final design of the road. And we will want to meet all of the requirements that the current owners have to provide the least impact to both of their properties.
So could I follow up?
Alderman Jettie?
Thank you. So, so why aren't we, why aren't we pursuing the negotiations and seeing whether, you know, that, whether it can be done by agreement with the owner first? And then if that fails, then, then talking about, you know, a taking? I guess you're talking about a taking by eminent domain? Am I confusing things?
If, if absolutely necessary. But we have to do a parallel path because of the criticality of the schedule for the new school. You know, we are talking about a new school that is going to be replacing Elm Street. And it's, it's not going to have anywhere near the number of students Elm Street has. It'll have approximately 800 students. And we have done an analysis to make the balance, the three middle schools, all the same, about approximately the same student enrollment. But again, this motion is only to identify that we've purchased a major piece of property off Buck Meadow. We already own the piece of property that the school's on. And this is to say that we need that connection piece to be able to have the road run to the school. I think it's as simple as that. And, and the requirement for this was, was put forth by attorney Leonard as part of the process. So, and put forth by me. I mean, it was, it's part of the legal team's approach.
Okay, thank you.
All said, Alderman Jettie? Thank you. Alderman Clea and Alderman Lopez, I'll have you in the queue. Thank you.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. I'm glad that Alderman Jettie brought up the comment about the description of the land and so on. Is that what's not in our packet here? So this, so this petition for street layout where it says, south 10 degrees, 49, et cetera, et cetera, this is exact?
That's not the street.
This is not the street that we're.
That's the property.
This is the property. So there's nowhere in this street where it talks about, I'm sorry, in this petition here that it talks about where the street is?
The street has not been finally designed, but the preliminary design has been reviewed by the city as to meeting all the requirements of a city street. It is not going to be a school-owned property, it will be city-owned property.
Okay.
All the way up to the edge of the school property.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All said, Alderman Clea?
Yes, thank you.
Alderman Lopez?
It's my understanding, it seems pretty evident that what we're trying to do here is confirm that there is a need. Seems logical, you don't really want to have a road on either side but nothing in the middle. So I think that's pretty clear. And I think it's understandable that attorneys representing the property owners that we're negotiating with would be likely to define all of their concerns for the record, as they stated they were doing, so that it's in public record as part of the negotiations. And I think it's understandable that our own legal department would like to make sure that it has all of the tools necessary to negotiate. So I intend to support this.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. Any other comments on the discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask a favor of Alderman Dowd. Can you just reread the pending motion to remind us all?
I move, after considering the public need for a new road to a new school, the cost of the road and the impact on the owners of the land over which the new road is proposed to be built, that there is a public interest and an occasion which require the city layout of the new highway as presented in the petition.
Thank you, Alderman Dowd. And that motion would be by roll call, correct?
Yes, and that wording was in attorney Leonard's.
Thank you for that update. And that is a roll call vote. Seeing another, Alderman Jettie?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
We're in the vote, I was going to call the voting mode.
I'm glad I caught you before you did. So, so the motion says that we've considered the cost. And, you know, it's been pointed out by people in opposition that we really don't know the cost. How do we, what is your answer to that?
This, this is like any other land the city is buying. We're in active negotiation, so much of the information, including the price, are, are non-public. Attorney Bolton?
I would say you could say it's, at this point in time, confidential information of a commercial nature.
But a bill will be released, obviously, because when we come to agreement with the owners, there'll be a purchase and sale agreement, and that'll have to come back to the board.
But if I could follow up? I just feel, I don't know, uncomfortable when I, when I read that, you know, the motion says that we've considered the cost, but we don't, at least I don't know what the cost is. And I'm not asking you to tell me if it's confidential, but I'm wondering if we shouldn't wait on this. Is there a problem with postponing this?
There is a problem. There's a timeline that attorney Leonard's following. And delaying this would significantly impact the school if we don't come to an agreement with the owners. But I think we're very, I'm pretty sure we're going to come to agreement with the owners. I think we're trying to meet all of their requirements. They've already given us their requirements, and we're answering them. We'll have probably a final answer tomorrow after the engineers all put their heads together. So I don't see there's a problem. Again, this is just saying that we have a need for the street. Cost is not part of it. Yes, there is a cost, and it's, obviously, if we buy the land, even if we take the land, there is a cost. It's not like we get it for free. And that cost would be identified when we get to that point in the procedure.
Thank you.
Are you all said, Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Okay, I think we're still in the voting mode, so therefore, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Clea?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
No.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Laws? Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright?
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher?
Yes.
You have 10 ayes and one nay.
Okay, motion carries. Before I ask Alderman Lopez for a motion to adjourn, I would like to remind the public immediately after this meeting. Correct, Madam President? Immediately after this meeting, we'll be going into the full board of Alderman meeting. So with that being said, Alderman Lopez, do I have a motion?
I would like to move to close this meeting.
By roll call? Motion to adjourn by roll call? Okay, motion to adjourn. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Clea?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright?
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher?
Yes.
You have 11 ayes and zero nays.
Okay, motion carries, and the meeting is closed. We'll be going back into session very shortly. And I declare the meeting adjourned at 7:46.
Okay, we're live.
Okay, I'm going to call a special meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Thursday, July 1, 2021, at 7:53 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber, as well as via Zoom teleconference. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Susan Lovering, and Alderman Harriet Gathright will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by, oh, I'm sorry. To join by Zoom, please refer to the agenda or the website for the meeting link and telephone number. Let's start the meeting. We have taken a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please indicate if participating via Zoom. State why you are not meeting in person, and whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to no law. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
I am present, and I'm in the chamber.
Alderman Cleve?
I am here in the chamber.
Alderwoman Kelly? Alderman Dow?
Yes, I'm present in the chamber.
Alderman Karen?
I'm here in the chamber.
Alderman Clemmons? Alderman Lopez?
I'm here, and I'm in the chamber.
Alderman Tenza?
I am participating via Zoom due to childcare issues. I can hear everybody, and there is no one else in the room with me.
Alderwoman Lou? Alderman Jettie?
Here.
Alderman Schmidt?
I am present in the chamber.
Alderman Laws? Alderman Cleaver?
Present via Zoom because of health issues.
Alderman Harriet Gathright?
I'm present in the chamber.
Alderman Mulcher?
I am here.
You have 11 in attendance. Two are participating via Zoom.
Thank you. Also in attendance this evening is Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton and Mayor Donches. Mayor, did you wish to say a few words before we get started?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Well, first, I wanted to thank everybody in the city, our employees and everyone else, for helping us achieve the award of the fourth best-run city in the United States. This is an award we've received in the past. We've never been this high. If you go through the ranking, a very predominant factor is the efficiency of city services. In other words, the quality of services versus the cost. And on that score, Nashville has been scoring very high, and it's due to the efforts of all of our citizens who work hard to pitch in, and of course, the Board of Aldermen and all of our city employees. Now, going into this budget year was, of course, a very tough year because of the actions taken by the state of New Hampshire. And we have discussed this at some length. The state raised our pension costs unrelated to pensions, excuse me, unrelated to current wages by $4 million, 4.4 actually, and cut school aid. So what do we do with that? I mean, I think the citizens, the homeowners, the taxpayers of Nashville expect us to set priorities, make some difficult decisions. I mean, we cannot set, even though we are being used as a cash register by the state of New Hampshire, and we should offset as much as we can, and I think that's what our residents would expect, but we can't offset an entire $12 million hit. So what I did going into the budget was I asked departments to exercise frugality and consider the interests of our taxpayers and our residents. We've just come off the pandemic, and certainly, many people, ordinary Nashawans, everyday people, are struggling to pay many of their bills. So I have City Hall for frugality, and they definitely came through. City Hall reduced the budget for the fiscal year that begins today by 2.9%, meaning the budget for this building and all of the associated departments, public health and everything else, is 2.9% lower today than it was yesterday. Public Works, down 1.3%. Same thing. That budget is down, is lower today than it was yesterday. And the library, also 1.9%. So those things helped. And it also helped that we have a new healthcare plan, which has been adopted by a number of employee groups, which helped us save money there. So with some of the other departments, I asked them also not to make the kind of sacrifices that we've made in City Hall here, but to exercise frugality and try to come in, and this is what I proposed in the budget, come in at the cost of living. No, not below the cost of living, but at the cost of living. I know the Fire and Police Department have taken issue with this, but those departments have gone up significantly more than the cost of living for year after year for a whole number of years. So this year, for one year, given what we're facing, I asked for a cost of living. And I think if the budget is passed as I proposed it, we would see about a 3.5% or 3.6% tax increase. Now, this is more than we would like. I mean, no question about it. But given what the state has done, it seems about the best we can do. We've offset a lot of what the state has done, but certainly, we can't pay for, we can't devastate quality services. And I think what citizens are looking for, what they want and deserve, is for us to balance the need for quality services, which I think we have, balance the need for fairly paid employees, which I believe we have, with the needs to keep tax increases to at least as low as we can reasonably make them. And I think 3.5% in this case, at least in my judgment, is about where the limit of what people can afford. So that's how I got to this budget, and those are the circumstances that we're all dealing with. Now, Madam President, there is one issue that I know Attorney Bolton and CFO Griffin are going to raise related to the Senate Bill 52, which was passed by the legislature affecting the cap. They can give you the details, but they are going to propose that there be an increase in the budget to take into account the grants that we get, and an offsetting revenue amount to offset the grant amounts. This has no effect on the tax rate because it's grant money coming in and being recorded as revenue, and also being recorded as expenditures. But they can explain in more detail the rationale behind this, and I'm sure that, I expect that you, Madam President, are going to, at some point, have them offer that explanation. So that is all that I have, Madam President. And unless people have questions, thank you for the opportunity.
You're welcome. At this point, I'm going to call for anyone to give public comment who signed up on items expected to be acted upon this evening. And the first speaker is Fred T. Boom. Just to set the stage here, it's a three-minute comment period, and we need your name and address for the record.
My name is Fred T. Boom. I reside at 24 Cheyenne Drive. Like the new setup, I don't see any portraits. What happened to all the portraits? I'm missing the portraits. I'd like to say the cap is back. SB 52, which is mentioned, the cap is back. If you hold this resolution until August 20, I think you have to meet the override conditions of the cap because the budget exceeds the cost of living limit on the cap. Now, what I'd like to address is the R 21142, first of all. In the back of R 142 is an analysis. The analysis deals with the fact that an increase, addition to the budget, proposed by the mayor requires a two-thirds vote of the members of the board. There's a wishy-washy statement by the faulty city attorney opinion that suggests that a court may find this provision, et cetera, et cetera. That's about as wishy-washy as you can get. The fact is, the opinion ignores the 2011 laws, which came following the Manchester case of 2010 cited, and that took care of the two-thirds vote. So two-thirds vote to override the budget in adding line items that the mayor did not propose is perfectly legitimate. And if there's a question on this, Mayor Bolton, I suggest you contact the mayor and have the mayor sue the city because it's a charter provision. The other thing you should have on your desk, I hope Donna told me that she would send a copy of my memo that I dated June 30. First of all, I mentioned in there that the mayor had, on pages, I think, eight and nine, given a presentation about the comparison of the increase. He'd ignored the pension, FICA, and Medicare. But the fact is that we, the taxpayers, have to pay the bill for the pensions. So you can't ignore that. And if you take that into account, it's on the table on page one of my memorandum. Hopefully, you all have a copy. You see that instead of 1.7 increase, there's, for the police, a 6.6% increase in the budget. For the fire, the fire people are here, the police is here, looking to get their raises.
30 seconds.
9.1%. Completely unacceptable. If you look why, you'll find that there's a 23.5% increase in the pension cost. If you cite the fact that the pension fund was mismanaged by over $1 billion, it's all that's well documented, and the fact of the insanity of asking for 100% funding, you can take a look at my example of a deputy fire chief now an alderman, the kind of money he makes as a pension.
Madam President, time.
Time is up, sir.
Well, I hope you put the same gag rule on this alderman when they make the comments that you put on the public, when they have to make comments about what affects their taxes.
Lou Juris. Again, name and address for the record, please, and you have three minutes.
Good evening. Lou Juris here from 56 Haynes Street. This is the result of the downshifting. And as a result, these cuts had to be made. And a higher-than-normal tax increase is probably going to happen. But what this budget will do is guarantee that when the alarm bells go off, the fire department shows up within a reasonable time, within the time of specifications. That goes with the same with the cops. Something happens, they're going to be there under this budget. The ambulance, educating our students, public health, especially in this past year and a half where we've had a pandemic. And in addition to the continued upgrades of our roads and the maintenance of our roads and our sewer system, and of course, keeping the water flowing, this is what this budget's going to continue to do. And if there are those who are speaking and making, you know, making comments against it, then they should have tried to reach out to those in the legislature and the state senate who voted to push these downshifting costs, especially in regards to the pension costs. This is where the rubber meets the road. And I think the city's done its best to try to mitigate that. It's my opinion that this full board should pass the budget. Thank you.
There is no one else signed up for public comment? Reports of committees?
Laura Cohon.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Cohon?
Yes. Laura Cohon at 30 Greenwood, Greenwood Road. I find it funny that the mayor keeps telling the taxpayers that his budget is $290 million. However, The Telegraph reported the budget to be $290 on June 22 and $346 million on June 26. Page, that's on page 28 of the budget. I guess the Nashville mayor does not like to tell the whole truth, or he just likes to think that the Nashville taxpayers are stupid, that there are other expenses that the taxpayers have to pay, but the mayor just does drop some off the budget. The budget is simple. We take the revenues and we minus the appropriations. That balance has to be paid by the Nashville taxpayers, both the residential and commercial property owners. Our mayor has not told the truth to the Nashville resident taxpayers because they will be hit hard by the fact that the Nashville assessing department is dropping the valuations on commercial properties. So far, the valuation on commercial properties have gone down by $65 million, and that number is continuing to climb. This means the residential properties will have to pick up the difference. This is not something the mayor can blame the state on. However, residential property taxes will go up because of this valuation change. The Board of Aldermen knows this fact and has completely looked away. This board should have cut more expenses. However, this board is following the mayor's lead and keep spending, spending, spending. I hope all Nashville residents remember this the next election and vote all of you out of office. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to give public comment via Zoom?
Lori Ordolano.
Okay.
Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. First of all, I'd like to correct the attendance that was read into the record. It was stated that there were 11 in attendance and two via Zoom. There were actually nine in attendance. Kelly, Clemmons, Lou, and Law were not recorded as being on the record. And I'm interested in seeing how the two-thirds votes go with regard to passing the increases that the board proposed on Tuesday in their budget meeting. I'm opposed to the additional money being added for police and fire. I think they're funded adequately. I feel the response time issue from the fire department is, you know, difficult to quantify to a certain extent. When we put all the barriers up downtown, I didn't hear anyone... When we put all the barriers up downtown, I didn't hear anyone from the fire department and couldn't really get any response on what happened to response times when we cut the road down to a single lane on each side. And we did that without any problem or concerns that we were impacting our fire safety issues. So I feel like we need to be careful how often we point to those situations and use those to justify positions. I think we have a lot of positions that ought to be looked at closely, and I'm going to go back and tell you, I'm sure you didn't cut your assessing office, but I don't know why we're funding two commercial assessors in there because you all know how hot under the collar I am about what's happened with the Batmans and what's gone on in there and what gets done in the commercial area. We pay for it endlessly. You know, and I just found out, I didn't realize the chief we hired is only here for a year on a 12-month contract. So basically, he's almost a consultant. So, you know, we're going to be back in a chief position. You've got a new assessment level coming up next year. I'm concerned about the IT department. I've been calling around getting some good information. What are we doing about third-party sourcing for our emails? And what's going on in that area? I am not at all interested in seeing the administrative services director run an IT department. And I'm not at all interested in seeing that position continue or right-to-know coordinator or some of these upper management positions. They don't belong in this city budget, and they're not doing what they should do.
30 seconds.
I object to Attorney Bolton sitting in this chamber. There should be somebody else sitting in this chamber representing the legal office. Thank you.
Anyone else public comment?
Sherri Dutzy, 18 Swart Terrace. I am also a state rep for Ward 3, and I can verify what Mayor Donches is saying. Six months sitting in sessions in the House, and I have seen over and over again where representatives from the rural parts of the state not only have no interest in supporting the cities, but actively work to downshift and pass bills that will make the spending more difficult and delivering services more difficult for our cities and for our towns. I support this budget. I am also the chair of the Nashville Conservation Commission. We work very closely with the community development. They do a great job. I believe they are understaffed. I see the hours that many of them work to be able to support us. We are a small part of what they do. They support the zoning board and they support the planning board, and it takes enormous amounts of time because of the detail that's involved. So I appreciate the effort that is made by everybody. I have said this again and again, that New Hampshire wouldn't exist without the volunteers and without underpaid, overworked government employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to give public comment? Seeing no one, I'm going to move on to reports of committees. There being no objection, I'll suspend the rules to allow for the oral report of a budget review committee meeting held Monday, June 28, 2021, regarding proposed resolution, R 21 142. Alderman Dowd.
Yes, thank you. The Budget Committee went through all of the departments and, over the last month and a half, two months, listening to all of their requirements. We heard that they all tried to meet the requirements that were put forth by the mayor. I know the mayor has said that he allowed cost of living increases to police and fire, but I think that we determined that the cost of living increase doesn't protect our public safety. And the lack of money coming down from the state or the amount of money that we're having to send to the state to cover their expenses is costing the citizens of Nashua a public safety issue. And we don't think that's correct. So the motions that were made are, the first motion that was made was to add to the bottom line of the Police Department, Department 150, account number 90120, the amount of The next motion that was made was to take the police command van vehicle that was going to be bought this year out of cash in the SURF Special Reserve Fund to the bond line because of the cost of the vehicle and the amount of years that it would be online, the current one's at 16 years. Needs to be upgraded because the equipment on it is antiquated, and it's, again, a public safety issue. That's the command vehicle they use on all major events in the city. And so that amount, $495,745, was moved from the cash line in the SURF acquisition to the bond line. That will allow us to keep $500,000 in the SURF Capital Reserve, which has not been funded this year as part of the budget and is, all of our finance people will tell you, it's woefully underfunded. So this will help that. And then the third motion was to add to the bottom line Fire Department, Department 152, Fire, account number 90120, the amount of $418,771. That would allow the Fire Department to retain the fire company that they predicted they would have to lose with the mayor's cut and would add six months to a new employee in the Fire Marshal's Office. That person is our inspector that needs to be doing, by state statute, two inspections of each school in the city twice a year, and that has not been being done. And with the safety of children, I think that's a critical item. Also, this is the same person that checks the occupancy requirements in restaurants and meetings and other things, and that's only been done on a spotty basis based on the staffing. So it adds $660,109 to the budget and changes the mayor's budget from $290,366,852 to And then I have another motion to make.
Alderman Dowd, that last number was $291 million.
$291 million, I'm sorry.
I'd like the first number more.
$8,961.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to change on page 34, account number 48320, change that amount to $77,411,477. And on page 271, account number 70160, contingency grants, to the amount of $77,411,477. In addition to the resolution itself, R 2142, that would change the numbers on line seven And on line eight, it would change the $64,979,022 to $142,390,499. I would like those to be taken together. I will also try to explain what those changes are. Those changes are, if we don't take this action on the budget and those numbers, and by the way, those numbers do not impact the tax rate. It's for grants that we would accept during the year. Under the new legislation coming out of Concord, we would not be able to accept any grants. And we get grants for the Public Health Department, the Fire Department, the Police Department, and School Department. Several of our departments rely on grants. And it doesn't, like I said, it doesn't impact the tax rate because its money comes in by grant and gets spent. So there's no additional monies collected from the individual taxpayers. And we've been getting those types of grants for years. But if we don't do this tonight, if we get a grant, one of these grants in, we won't be able to accept it. So, and if we need further explanation on it, I think Mr. Griffin is here. But that's the motion, and I'd like us to act on the motion.
Alderman, please.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to add, I know that my little grant that's coming in for Ward 3, it was $1 million, is nothing compared to this, but the truth of the matter is, with the spending cap put in place, et cetera, we would not even be able to accept that grant if we don't budget for it, if we don't put this money in. And the monies that Alderman Dowd has spoken about literally are monies into one account as possible spending and monies in as a revenue account. So it's zero balance at the very end, and it does not affect the tax dollars. It is extremely important that we do this. Ward 3 has been waiting a long time to get that grant money, and it's coming in this fall. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Griffin, would you mind giving us an overview of this motion?
Certainly. John Griffin, Chief Financial Officer, subsequent to the passing of the Senate bill that reinstates the spending cap. We touched on it a little bit the other night. A lot of the interpretations of the former spending cap, which allowed us to not include appropriations for grants, is eliminated. So essentially, what we're left with is a spending cap that looks at any and all appropriations as a base. And the only two exclusions that you may consider during any particular year is the debt service associated with bonded capital and capital projects in that given year. And I do have an exhibit that I can distribute, but those particular items would not be able to be accepted and appropriated, even with an exclusion, because the exclusion, if you think about it, is about $17 million of debt service and about $1 million worth of capital projects. What Budget Chairman Dowd indicated is to put in, and we can discuss it, I'd be happy to discuss, we're going to put in the $77 million. That includes, and maybe I could hand this out. So what we have, that you'll be receiving, is what I refer to as Chairman Dowd, Budget Committee Chairman Dowd indicated, as typical grants for the city, typical grants for the school.
Thank you.
And lines number one through 18 identify most of the grants that we received this past year, along with an estimated fiscal '22 number. And those typical grants total about $10 million for the city side and $16 million for the schools. So there's $26 million. However, we know that through the hard work of everyone, we're going to get about $16 million of American Rescue Plan Act funding for the city. That's going to need to be accepted and appropriated. And then we have, as Mr. Donovan indicated at your Budget Review Committee, he had a nice slide that illustrated about $35.5 million of CARES Act funding and the companion ESAR funding coming from the American Rescue Plan Act. So the thought for discussion was to start off appropriating the funds in this particular budget and doing a companion offset of the appropriations that you're going to need in this particular budget. I know this budget's time-sensitive. We probably will need some cleanup transfer legislation because, as you know, the various reports that we have for the DRA and on the school side, the reports that they make to the Department of Education, they need to be in sync. So there'll be another analysis that will take place, but I wanted you to consider this particular funding. With the federal government and the acceptance of some of these grants through the Department of Education in New Hampshire, you never know when you're going to be able to pull those funds. As Mr. Donovan said, his grants are reimbursement grants. So they spend the money, get it approved, and then get reimbursed. So the thought was that we would combine the typical grants along with the, what I would consider one-time grants, which total $51.546 million, and put them in this budget. So I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time, and Attorney Bolton will be able to help on some of the nuances of the Senate bill that was passed. Thank you.
Questions? Alderman, jury.
Thank you, Madam President. So all of this grant money that's $51,546,000, this is not in the budget that we've been looking at, this budget book?
Madam President, I'd be happy to answer that. It's not included in this budget book.
Okay. And where are we? I'm sorry, when Alderman Dowd explained it, I didn't catch where it was going to go.
Right. Yes, I can recap that. Given the time sensitivity of the budget passing and knowing that you all would like to pass it with due consideration, we put the revenue on page 34 with a, I actually gave it a new account number, 48320, grant revenue. So that's in the financial services area. And as far as the appropriations, page 271, 194, Department contingency, a new account, 70160, contingency-grants. So that's the offset. So as Alderman Dowd indicated and the mayor indicated, there's no increase in local tax dollars. It's simply accepting the revenue, budgeting for it, and budgeting for the appropriations. So those two numbers are designed to be the same. With regard to the revenue side, it's an estimate in this budget book anyway. So to the extent grants don't come in as timely as we would like or want, that revenue would be offset by the grant, the amount of grants that come in. So at the end, on the record, there would not be surplus with that, nor would there be appropriations in excess of revenue.
Could I follow up?
Alderman, jury.
So I don't know if you or Attorney Bolton would be more appropriate to explain, why would we, as this grant money comes in, why would we not be able to accept it without doing what you're suggesting tonight? What prevents us from accepting that money?
Well, the, kind of the tactical accounting side of it is, you're going to be outside the bounds of the camp, the limitations of the camp. That's a potential. Attorney Bolton might have a more legal answer than that, but...
Attorney Bolton?
Thank you. The issue is twofold. The state law currently, with the passage of Senate Bill 52, and it's being signed by the governor, takes effect 60 days after it was adopted by the House. That's mid-August. Supplemental appropriations that are made to this budget will, after that date in August, have to conform to the budget limitations, the so-called spending cap provisions of the city charter, which means that you cannot exceed last year's total budget by more than a percentage of a three-year rolling average of this certain government index. And just estimating that, perhaps that amount would be approximately $3 million. That increase, $3 million. Well, we've never in the past included grants as being... Well, we've never in the past included grants as being part of that whole spending cap calculation, so it wasn't in last year's budget. But if you look at the law as it currently exists, or will exist come that date in mid-August, it says that a charter can provide, for exceptions, for grants, enterprise funds, gifts, and other revenues from sources other than property taxes. And you can, those can be exempted in the charter. Our charter doesn't exempt them. So if we can only raise the budget that we passed last year by three million dollars, well, we, we would not be able to accept and appropriate grants. And we're expecting grants approximately seventy-seven million. This is money that we get from other sources, not from property taxes. So it makes sense to say, okay, let's put in the budget, just like you do with other things. Put in the budget the amount you expect to receive in revenue from grants and the amount you expect to spend of those grant monies. Typically, you'd have to spend them all. They're not giving you money just to hang around for the things you're supposed to do with it. And that's in light of what one of the public commenters said earlier. You take the revenue, you subtract the appropriations, and the amount left is what has to be raised in taxes. And that's exactly correct. And that's what this proposes to do. Proposes to treat these grant revenues just like any other revenues and expenditures from those grant revenues, just like other expenditures. And the reason we want to do that now is because of the way the law now reads with the recent legislative changes. And we're dealing with a sort of shifting sands situation, trying to react to something that basically happened less than a month ago with the passage of Senate Bill fifty-two and its approval by the governor. So yes, it does seem last minute, but as has been repeated many times, this has no effect on the amount of money we're going to raise from taxes. It's just a more accurate reflection of the fact that we're getting revenue and spending that revenue from a source other than taxation. It's what's been done for many years, but the proper way to recount for it, given the current state of the law, is to include both sides, the revenue side and the expenditure side, in the budget.
Can I follow? And obviously, obviously, you think that, that by doing this, that this will work, that that will allow us to accept the grant money? I understand how putting it in this year's budget, assuming that everything else stays the same, putting it in this year's budget will, it will, you know, give us more room to expand next year, because it will be, you know, putting in this year's budget, you know, these appropriations that, and when we spend this grant money, you know, it'll give us a higher starting point. I guess I'm not sure why we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to accept the grant money. And I, I understand, you know, with, with all apologies to Mr. T. Boom, I, I think the, the spending cap, I think, you know, I think a lot of people understand, but I think a lot of people don't understand that the spending cap is not a tax cap, it's a spending cap. And in its, you know, in its worst effect, it prevents us from spending money even though that money might not come from the taxpayers at all. And that's the, the problem that you're trying to solve here, I, in, at least in part, that, you know, we're, this money that we're getting from the federal government or state grants or gifts, you know, count in the, on, in the limit on, on the appropriation. Also, you know, it doesn't take into consideration if the tax base increases, you know, as property values go up or new businesses come in, new apartment buildings are built, and the, and the tax base increases, which would allow us, which would allow us to reduce taxes, reduce, you know, because of the increased share of that, of the burden, it doesn't affect, we're still limited on what we can spend. And, you know, I think that's a flaw in the, in the, in the current law, and if we have to live with that, it's going to, it's going to make it difficult. It's not, you know, it doesn't necessarily reduce the tax rate, it reduces the amount that we can spend, wherever the source of that money might be. So I understand that part of it, because I didn't realize that we, that we wouldn't be able to even accept this money during the next fiscal year without making these changes.
Shall I respond? The, the issue is that grants were not included in the budget last year. So if you just look at what was in the budget last year, and then say that the total appropriations in this year, including any supplemental appropriations in the course of the year, have to stay beneath this cap, you would be looking at last year's budget, which did not have the grants in it. Today, you can appropriate this money, as, as it's being called contingency grants. So you can do the appropriation now. This, this resurrection of the spending cap is not going to affect until sometime in August. But to accept and appropriate grant money after this, after that August date, that's an appropriation. So if we don't appropriate it before that date, we are going to run up against this limit. This limit will, is going to enable something like three million dollars in excess of last year's total budgeted expenditures, which didn't consider grants. And the reason for that is, they hadn't been considered in many years. After the original passage of the spending cap charter provisions, the board of Alderman adopted an ordinance intended to explain and define things in the, the spending cap provisions. And so they defined combined annual municipal budget as excluding expenditures from grants. I believe the current state of the state law, which governs us, would render those ordinances null and void. Now, if you want to exclude things like grants and other monies that aren't raised from taxes, it has to be a provision in the charter itself. Our charter doesn't have those provisions. So if we're going to make a change in the accounting, now is the time to do it.
Is that Alderman Jettie?
Yeah, I, I guess, if I may, I, I was looking at, this may, may be appropriate to bring this up now. I looked at the, you know, the total appropriations, which I found on, on page eighteen, which is, you know, the, the, the amount that, you know, we talked about earlier was, you know, the general fund appropriation, but the total appropriations, which I think the, you know, I understand the current spending cap is not, has been, court has said it's not enforceable, and this new law is going to make it enforceable once again. Right now, we're not, as I understand it, we're not under that. But if we were under it, it limits the, the total appropriations to, as you pointed out, this, you know, what we spent, what the total appropriations were in fiscal year twenty-one. And we can only increase that by the three-year average gross domestic product implicit price deflator for state and local government, which is, which I had trouble finding, you know, trying to figure out what that is currently. CFO Griffin says he, he thinks it's around two percent, or maybe slightly less than two percent, but around two percent. When I looked at, you know, the law, the law allows us, as you pointed out, one of you pointed out, the law allows us by, by ten votes to exempt principal and interest on bonds and capital investments, which in the, which, you know, this year is, we've budgeted eighteen million, one hundred and fifty-two thousand, one hundred, zero, five, five. If we, if we subtract that, if we voted to subtract that principal and interest and capital expenditures of eighteen million plus, that would lower the total appropriations in the budget to, before, before this change that we're talking about right now. That would lower the, the, the total appropriations to less than what it was last year. So it would, it would be, you know, you know, if we, if we adopted the mayor's budget, it would be seventy-seven hundredths of a percent, you know, less than one percent, less than last year's budget. And if we adopted the, the amendments suggested by the Budget Review Committee, it would be about a half a percent less. In either case, it would certainly, you know, it would be less than the, the two percent that we would be allowed if the spending cap were currently in effect. So I bring that up now because I'm wondering whether you would recommend that we consider, whether it's necessary, you know, to, to make a motion to see whether ten people vote to exempt the principal and interest and capital expenditures as provided in the charter from, from that spending cap.
You can only do that once a year. So if you want it to take that full total, I guess you're giving yourself as much flexibility as possible. But if you don't want it to exempt the full total, you are narrowing your options. You can't go back and change it later. So there's no need to do it. If this motion that's currently pending were to pass, if you do do that, exempt the full amount of capital expenditures and service on bonded debt, you still have not created enough space for the amount of grant money that's anticipated. So I would not recommend doing that. I would keep all of your options open, and if you run into difficulties, you can decide whether that's an appropriate action to take. But the pending motion doesn't change the amount of taxes people will pay. And I think anytime you can solve a problem without increasing the amount of money that you have to, you know, have people pay, you're probably best off. And we're talking about just the ability to spend money that we can obtain from other sources other than our taxpayers. So I would think you would want to take full advantage of those opportunities, and that's the import of the proposed amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Klee.
Thank you, Madam President. One of the statements I kind of want to make, the thing I hear often up in Concord is that be careful of unintended consequences. When this was proposed and it went through my committee, municipal and county government, we talked about the unintended consequences of something as a grant, and we got feedback, well, no, we put it into the bill. You know, you can, you can accept, you can exempt grants and you can exempt this. And when I tried to explain to them, the reason why I felt strongly that this bill was going after Nashua was Nashua did not have that built into the charter. Grants are not built into the charter, just those two items that we, we've talked about, the principal and interest and so on. It seemed to go on deaf ears. I tried to get them to change it to say, if it's not in a charter, it can be added or can be just automatically exempted and so on. And I got, no, you got to let your taxpayers, you got to let your voters decide on that. And we, we fought back and forth. The bottom line is, this passed. And it passed with these, as far as I'm concerned, intended consequences, not unintended consequences. I feel very strongly that they were intended consequences. And I keep making a joke about my Ward III one million dollar grant. When I first got elected, we put in for this grant for Lock Street to, to change this, to make it safer, to make it a better walking, we got the grant for one million dollars. That was back in twenty-seventeen. The monies are just going to come through, hopefully, this fall. Now, we're looking at four years to get this, to get this money and so on. And I would hate to have to go to my ward and say, all this work that we did, we can't accept that one million dollars. I would rather put it in as an appropriation and as a revenue, so that it literally is a balanced budget. We cannot spend more than we get, but we can accept it. If I remember correctly, at the public hearing for the budget, there was an ex-Alderman who stood up and was quite upset that he felt that we did not fund two organizations. One, I believe, was the Girl Scouts, and another one was, I, I forget what the other one was, Salvation Army, I think it was. And he was quite irate. He did not seem to understand that they didn't put in for those monies. But when you look at all the lists that we work at for the Human Resources Committee, the HUD grant and so on, we would not be able to give those out if we don't put those here ahead of time. And I would hate to have to say to all of those, you know, companies such as, right now I'm blanking all, but the Front Door Agency and so on, we can't help you, we can't fund you, or the Home Loan Program, goodness, or the Renters Loan Program. I'd hate to say, we can't do that this year because we didn't have the foresight to think of this. Where this is being zero and it's not affecting the taxpayers, I don't see, think we'll get pushback from the taxpayers. I think it's just, as I keep referring to these things as paper chases. But, and, and I make a joke, but I'm very serious about it. If Ward III loses that one million dollars, I am not going to be happy, and I'm going to have a lot of unhappy campers over our one million dollars. So I'd like to see this go through as, as it was recommended. But I do appreciate everything that Alderman Jettie had brought up. Those are really good points as to, does it mean that we can't? I think it just helps clarify the situation. So thank you very much.
Alderman Lopez.
I think Alderman Klee is being a little bit kind about saying she'll be unhappy. I think if, if a mother is pushing a baby stroller down the street and gets hit by a car because we didn't fix that, people will be very unhappy. So these aren't just appropriations that are done on a whim. The CDBG money and the review and comment money, for example, support things like the expansion of Nashua Soup Kitchen's homeless shelter, because our city welfare isn't, doesn't have the capacity to put up all of the homeless people in Nashua into motels. We don't even have the motel capacity for that. Those are things we rely on nonprofit organizations to do in partnership with the city, and the city as a municipality is able to apply for those grants, and all taxpayers benefit from that. A project I'm concerned about is the rail trail extension, which the bike path on, along West Hollis is very popular for people using it recreationally. It's also essential for kids traveling to and from school and, you know, traveling on the afternoons when there's... school and, you know, traveling on the afternoons when there's a tremendous amount of traffic along West Hollis. It lets them move up and down the rail trail safely. It lets elderly people who are living in outer sections of the, in outer neighborhoods, you know, travel downtown to get to the hospital, to get to the pharmacy, to do things they need to do. So the extension on the other side to the East Pearl, or the East Hollis side, is a big deal. And these are projects that the Community Development Program has done based on need, based on considerable amount of work that the state doesn't care about, didn't take into account. The state governs this way, and at best can, it can be said to be incompetent. They're not getting high marks as the state of New Hampshire for governing any of these municipalities. We are. We're the ones who are working with our constituents and with our nonprofit organizations to solve problems, including the problems that the state drops on us. Because partisan politics, you know, people may be trying to create a certain narrative about our performance as aldermen. Regardless of how well we do with our budget, the narrative is definitely gonna be, we raise taxes, we spend more money. And the culprits for it are not the ones who are responsible for it, the state representatives who are not our elected state representatives. We're already hearing people trying to blame the fire department for wanting raises when they're trying to maintain a level of service, likely knowing that this budget doesn't actually account for their contract negotiations or that kind of stuff specifically. They're trying to make sure that their response time is effective. We just had a fire yesterday on Prescott Street. If a house burns down, that's not gonna be a, oh, let's elect a new person next year. That's a tragedy, and that's potential lives lost. The response time for Nashua Fire was criticized in public comment earlier. I know last week they managed to catch a mattress that was on fire in a very heavily populated building with a lot of disabled people in it, before it caused more damage than just to that unit. Coming right through downtown, right through Main Street, the building is located on West Pearl. So Nashua Fire does a lot of work. They've been responding to a lot of calls, even in the middle of a hurricane or whatever you wanna call yesterday's flash storm. And we need to keep that service intact because its, lives depend on it. That's not where you wanna cut. The Nashua Police, from the state perspective, they may be saying, oh, well, let's fully fund the pension program, even though we don't need 20% of the total program to keep it sustainable by any measure. Let's do that because we feel like doing it. But the impact on the ground is, now Nashua PD is supposed to not upgrade their command center, not continue to make sure that they have compatible equipment with other, other parts of emergency response systems. They just made some major arrests yesterday of people who were involved in cocaine trafficking, felons that own multiple firearms. They've been managing a number of increasing domestic terror threats in the city, including white supremacy actions and, you know, intimidating behaviors that have actually started to penetrate even into our own public meetings. This is not a good idea to cut resources from them because somebody on a subcommittee decided that they wanted to play games and maybe make a point. These are services we need for our Nashua residents that result in tragedy or catastrophe when we aren't able to provide them. I've made many, many comments about how we need more resources for people who are homeless, and we need more resources for people who are struggling to make their rent or facing homelessness eviction. Alderman Klee mentioned the home funds. Those are important programs, and that's not just our score on a Wallet Hub survey. That's what our residents and what our taxpayers deserve. And if the intention of expanding our budget so that we can accept tax money that these taxpayers already paid to the federal government that we are returning in exchange for services and to specific areas, that benefits them. And I think it's something that we need to do. I don't think we should hamstring our own budget because somebody in Concord decided to take away the rights of Nashua taxpayers to repair or manage their own spending cap and just imposed it on us in what I think is a pretty unusual manner. So I think the motions that are made are reasonable, and I think the costs that are associated are essential. And as has been stated multiple times, this is grant money that is not going to increase the taxpayers' bill.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'd just like to reiterate so it doesn't get lost in the shuffle here. We had a Goldenrod copy of R21-142, and the motion I made to change the items in the budget book, as was pointed out by Mr. Griffin, allowed to change the numbers in the Goldenrod copy. And I think the motion is to accept the motion that was made and accept the Goldenrod copy with the new numbers in it before finally vote on the budget.
Anyone else? Alderman Jettie.
I'm, perhaps I missed it, but I, I know you made, you made a report of the, about what the Budget Review Committee did. I'm not sure that you made a motion.
Yeah, I did make a motion. I can repeat it.
Would you, Alderman Dowd?
As soon as I change glasses. I'd like to make a motion to change Page 34, Account Number 48320, to the amount of $77,411,477. And on Page 271, Account Number 70160, contingency grants, to the amount of $77,411,477. Those are offsetting. And therefore, in making those changes to the budget book, it changes the Goldenrod copy that you have in front of you on page, on Line 7. It changes the number 291,026,961 to 368,438,438. And on Line 8 in the Goldenrod copy, it changes the $64,979,22 to 142,390,499. So that would be the new Goldenrod copy to accept under R21-142.
Alderman Jettie.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to be so dense about this, but did you include the increasing the police budget?
That was in the original Goldenrod copy. The 291,026,961 included the three motions made at the closing that we voted on in the Budget Committee.
Okay, so that's already...
It's already in there.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Madam Clerk, I believe the motion before us is to amend Resolution...
To accept the Goldenrod copy as amended.
With the Goldenrod copy. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, you've heard. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none with the, Alderman Jettie.
So are we, are we voting? It's all one package?
Right. We're just voting for the changes to the Goldenrod copy. And then the Goldenrod copy, after we approve it, will be the final budget that we will then try to adopt of R21-142.
So, so it, you know, having it all together like this makes it difficult because, you know, there are parts of this that I object, that I don't agree with. The, you know, I agree with, you know, with changing, adding the grant revenue and the grant appropriations. I, I agree with that. And I, I agree with taking the $495,745 for the command vehicle out of Suraf, and that's gonna be bonded.
Alderman Jettie, perhaps I could clarify. After we pass the, so we have the clean Goldenrod copy, before we, then there'll be a second reading of R21-42. You could make other motions then.
Okay, is that correct? Am I jumping the gun here?
No, I, I think what we could do to address that is to take this piece by piece, the police, the fire, and then the grants.
Alderman Dowd.
Bernie Bolton, do we need to do that? Can we just, could those be addressed under the final motion on the budget?
Well, you can do what most pleases the majority of the board. But the question posed, or the indication was that it was difficult to separate these things out when it was all packaged together. So it may be an appropriate way to approach it, is to do one motion about the changes in the police budget, which I understand is two pieces. A second motion that deals with the fire department, and a third motion that deals with the grants. And then maybe people will have a better understanding of how they wish to vote in each separate area.
Okay. So the motion on the floor is to amend Resolution 21-142 by replacing it with the Goldenrod copy. What's the, what's the, what's pleasure?
Madam President...
Alderman Jettie.
I would like us to take it, to separate it, but I'm not sure how to accomplish that. Can I just make a motion that we separate it so...
Yes. Sure.
That either passes or not, and we'll go from there.
Point of order, I think you'd have to amend the motion that's on the floor currently.
I'm not sure we do. I mean, we're, we're moving to amend the budget resolution with the Goldenrod copy.
There are pieces of the numbers that are in the motion that I made that he wants to change. So if, if he wants a piece of that out, suggest that you make a motion to amend, to eliminate, reduce, add, whatever he wants to do to that particular item that's in there.
Okay, we can do that route. Alderman Jettie, did you wanna make a motion on the police departments?
Yes, I, maybe, maybe someone can help me locate where it is in this Goldenrod copy.
It, it would be, the motion on the floor, the total budget, including the, what we talked about for the grants, is $368,438,438. The motion on the police budget portion of that is $241,338.
I'm, I'm having trouble following, following you. I...
Yeah, it, it's that sheet that you got that had the motions on it from the Budget Committee? And if you want to eliminate the adjustment to the police department, that would be $241,338.
Okay, so, yes, I would like to amend the Goldenrod copy by eliminating $241,338 from the police department, Line Item 90120, which would restore it back to what the mayor had proposed. And I would like to speak to that.
Alderman Jettie.
So the, you know, we've, we've, we've heard the mayor explain his, his position, you know, how he started from being given a difficult task, you know, based upon the consequences of, of, you know, what the state, you know, the state pension fund, the amount that they are asking us to pay, and plus the legislature's, you know, not funding schools as much, and not funding, you know, our, giving us our full share of the rooms and meals tax. And, you know, there are, there are several things that the state budget is doing that is reducing the, the support that the city is getting from the state, which has put us in a, in a, a difficult situation. And he explained how he asked, you know, the various departments to either maintain, you know, a zero budget or reduce it, and how he tried to get the police department to go with a 1 point, I think it was a 1.7% cost of living increase. And, and the police, you know, came back and said that they want, that, that they don't wanna do that. And so the, the effect of the mayor, you know, holding them to the 1.7% cost of living increase, if I understood it correctly, was that it would reduce their proposed budget of, by $241,338. Now, their entire budget is, according to Page 144, their entire budget is $35,320,858. That is a 6.7% increase over last year's budget. And the mayor asking them to reduce that by $241,338 seemed, you know, fairly reasonable to me. I think that, that in a $35 million budget, they would be able to find that amount. And I think, you know, during the budget hearing, you know, they, the, the police chief told us that, that in order to, you know, that he could meet the mayor's request, that he would certainly, you know, whatever we, whatever amount of money we provided to the police department, he would live with that. But he said, he pointed out to us that there would be a, a, a reduction in services in some way. You know, I, and he pointed out that he would have to eliminate four police officers. I, I questioned him about that because I, I think, you know, when I divide the 340, 240 or whatever, police amount that the mayor's asking him to reduce the budget by, by four, you know, that, that I end up with, you know, around $60,000. I know police officers, you know, make more than that. And when you add in their benefits, it's, it's a lot more than that. And I think, you know, I have a lot of respect for the police department and the chief and everybody, and, and the deputies and all the police officers. I think he, he does a great job. It's an extremely well-run department. But when we're asking other departments to, you know, to, to, to reduce their budgets, or limit their budgets to under 2%, and, and the police are asking us for, you know, 6.7%, you know, I, I think it's not fair. I think that is, you know, and, and I'm not going to pretend to be able to look at their budget and come up with items that I would say that they can reduce. items that I would say that they can reduce. You know, the chief and there's a police commission that do that. They have an excellent budget person. So I'm, I'm not going to tell them how to, to reduce their budget by two hundred and forty-one thousand, but I certainly believe that they can. You know, we're talking about thirty-five million, two hundred and forty-one thousand out of thirty-five million. It seems to me that, 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 that's a reasonable request. The mayor is trying to deal with a difficult situation, and he's asked the, the departments to, to cooperate in that regard, and, and I, and I think it's reasonable. You know, we, we've just been awarded, or this Wallet Hub has said that we're the fourth best-run city in the nation. And, you know, that's certainly not because of anything I've done. I, I think it's largely due to, you know, the mayor and his management of, of, of the city departments, including the, the police department. And, and I, you know, and I support him in his trying to lessen the impact on taxpayers as much as possible. So that's why I make that motion.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'm the liaison to the police commissioners, and, and yes, they, they'll operate with any amount of money we give them. But you can't expect the same amount of service. And they, when they put their budget together, they didn't add anything. They just kept the same services and the same manning and everything that they had last year. And then it was cut. So there are going to be losses. If you take that into consideration, when our, the fentanyl traffic in, in Nashua is growing, and I'm sure you get the same reports I do on the, on the arrests that are being made. And during this last year, the police officers that were physically harmed and were out of work because of arrests that were made, it's not an easy job. It's, it's protecting the people of Nashua. It's a safety issue. And I, for one, am not going to have the state drive the safety of our citizens in Nashua. You know, that amount of money will allow them to maintain the same levels of service that they've had last year and, and provide the services. There are a lot of things that they won't be able to do, believe it or not, with that cut. And then the people in Nashua are going to, you know, right now, they're not at the full complement of offices they could have and should have by, by their analysis. You know, I, I don't know how many times I've heard people say, oh, it takes a police officer ten minutes to get here. That's because each sector has one car during each shift. We're not overpoliced. We're adequately policed, and they do a great job with the staff they have. And I, for one, am not going to cut one penny from their request to maintain the services that they provided over the past year, which were exemplary. During the last year, they were commended as one of the best, if not the best, police-accredited agency in the United States. That's something to be proud of. And I, for one, will not cut them to save a couple bucks on a tax rate. You know, if, if you're somebody out there and your home is being burglarized because drug dealers need money to buy their drugs, you want a police officer to be able to respond. And you don't want him ten minutes later, you know, you want him as soon as he can get there. You know, if, if you follow the amount of arrests and things that have gone on in the city and, and the lack of development of drug dealers because we have two POP units, which we may lose one if this cut goes in, I, for one, would not ever try to save that much money and lose that kind of protection.
Alderman Lopez.
Echoing a lot of what Alderman Dowd said, I find it extremely inconsistent to claim that you have high respect for the budgetary prowess of the police department and respect for the good work that they do in the job while literally telling them that you are just going to drop their, their budget down despite their objections and despite their concerns with the assumption that they can make it work based on what you're looking for. I can't follow that logic. I would say that there's a big difference between cocaine and methamphetamines, which are two of the more prevalent drugs in the street right now, than fentanyl and carfentanil and those types of things. Carfentanil is definitely dangerous because it's an area infecter, so it's a danger to first responders. But somebody who's on cocaine or somebody who's using methamphetamines is typically much more agitated, aroused, animated, violent. One of the areas that we scored very highly on in order to get our good governance was low instances of violent crime. So if we decide to ignore the police and what they report as their level of need in a time where we're seeing an increase in substances that, that contribute to violent crime, we're going to see a rise in violent crime, and that doesn't just translate to Wallet Hub rankings. That translates to deaths, injuries, our own people being put in a greater level of harm's way. The best way to respond to those types of situations is to intervene before they start to become widespread. We did not collectively as a state do a very good job with the opioid crisis when it first presented itself. We responded after it was very evident in low-income situations or in areas of poverty. We really only responded to it when it was impossible to ignore. Our response was extremely effective, thanks to a pretty healthy amount of leadership and vision from the fire department and from Mayor Donches in arranging the, the safe station program, which the state took over, realigned, and redesigned into a model that is not as effective and is not anywhere near as responsive. They awarded contracts to partners that basically resulted in our fire department not being able to take twenty-four-hour walk-ups or calls because there would be nowhere to send them to. Apparently, the crisis is now just a nine-to-five bureaucratic exercise. It's not the same situation. So we don't have the same protections that we had even two years ago against the opioid crisis, which was people getting high, people being sedentary, not people getting animated and, you know, attacking each other and, you know, using weapons on each other. We're in a very different risk phase right now. I don't know if anybody was not paying attention last year, but tensions got a little bit high with the pandemic. There was a little bit of political friction that was taking place. You guys may have noticed it. And that hasn't exactly gone away. There are organized groups that are, as a result of that, operating in Nashua that Nashua PD is concerned about, Nashua PD is intervening in, some, some wards get a little bit more of it than others. So I will grant that probably Ward Four and maybe Ward Three and maybe Alderman Karen's ward see a little bit more police activity and need than other aldermen's who feel comfortable cutting the police. I don't. I think it's a very important department to fund, and we can't look at it as being fair to expect them to take the exact same pay, cut in budgets on a numerical basis as like the GIS department or any of the services that are really nice for us to have and do contribute overall to, you know, cities services to constituents, but are more amenities, not requirements. Doesn't matter how good or how quick, with respect to city clerk hovering, how quickly our, our city clerk's office is able to process your motor vehicles if your car gets stolen. So I think it's important that we recognize the importance of the police department with more than rhetoric and not cut them any further. And, and finally, I would remind the, my fellow alderman that the police department were the ones who found a solution to their overages and figured out the SURF strategy in the first place. It's not like they're not trying to work on this and they're not making recommendations. I think we should listen to the recommendations instead of accepting them and then pushing for more despite what they're telling us.
Alseth, Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Thank, thank you, Madam President. I just want to make a couple of points on Alderman Jettie's motion, just generally. I think when we speak about percentage increases, I think it's important to, to look at, you know, what those percentages mean really for, for the tax rate because, you know, we, we throw our numbers like three or four percent in, in, for, you know, those, none, none of us like to raise people's taxes, and, and we all, I think, understand that any tax increase affects some members of our community more, more than others. But just as an example, I, I want to use my house at ten Monica Drive about what, you know, a four percent or three and a half percent tax increase would, would mean for, for me and my family. So if, if I do the math, a three and a half percent tax increase would amount to about an additional two hundred and fifty dollars for, for us next year, added on to our tax bill, or about twenty, twenty-one dollars a month extra that we would pay. And then a four percent increase in, in the tax bill would be about two hundred and eighty dollars or about twenty-three dollars per month that we would pay in additional taxes. And so when I, when I, you know, we, we say, oh, we think of four percent as being an outrageous number. You know, I, I can confidently speak for, for myself, for many of my neighbors when I say that, you know, we're fortunate and we're, we're gladly would pay the extra twenty-three dollars a month to keep our city services where, where they are. Not just police and fire, but school, DPW, City Hall, everyone who does a fantastic job to, you know, make Nashua such an attractive place to live. One of the things that I think we forget about when we are having this discussion is not only, you know, what, what the tax increases are, but, you know, how value of, the values of property have increased in the city and how that affects folks as well. There are certainly people who are benefiting because Nashua is a, an attractive place to live and more and more people want to move here and, and be part of our community. Certainly, like many people have talked about, a lot of that is the quality of our services, schools, police and firefighters. So I, I think these additional funds that the Budget Committee has included for police and fire are, are worth the investment. The next thing I just want to point out is that if you, if you look at the cities and towns surrounding Nashua, our tax rate is right in line with, with what many of the other towns are charging their residents. You know, per thousand, the Hudson tax rate is twenty-one thirty-seven for twenty-twenty, Salem is twenty-two oh two per thousand, Merrimack is twenty-four oh six per thousand, Hollis is twenty-three, twenty-three dollars and eighteen cents per thousand. Now, those towns don't offer the same services that we do. They certainly don't have the same, the same number of employees. So our tax rate, you know, I feel again, at, at twenty-two sixty-one per thousand or even as it increases, is still a, a very much in line with those, you know, with those towns and, again, a great deal for, for our residents. If you look at cities, the cities in, in New Hampshire, Manchester's tax rate is twenty-four sixty-six per thousand and Concord's is twenty-six point seventy-six per thousand. So the residents of Nashua, again, are, are coming on ahead as opposed to what other cities are able to do for, or, or the cost to live in, in those other cities. So I, I would hope that this board, and if Alderman Jettie makes a second motion as it relates to the fire department, I may have some other comments. But I, I would hope that the board, you know, takes all of that into consideration. Certainly, if there are people that are affected by this, this, any, any tax increases, I would hope that legal department in assessing will work with them to be able to come up with a way that is not a detriment to them, especially our elderly population or, or people who are maybe more, more low income. But, but given the, you know, work and the consideration that the Budget Committee has done, that these departments have done, I hope that we can come together and, and, you know, support the budget as it came out of the Budget Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Clea.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to be honest, when I came here, I, I thought, why should we increase police and fire the additional amount over the one point seven percent cost of living that the mayor had put in? Especially considering that so many departments had either gone a flat line or they went negative. They, they decreased their budget. But as I've been sitting here and listening, I think Alderman Jettie made some very good comments and remarks. But then I looked to my other colleagues, and one of the things that Alderman Lopez had brought up was the number of hate groups coming in. We're seeing them openly doing this, and I can tell you in my ward, I have witnessed it as well. I've witnessed people being threatened. I know we've had more FBI interaction and so on. And knowing that, I would have anxiety of not giving them what they say they need. I do hear year after year, and I will be honest, if we don't get this, we're going to have to cut this. We're going to cut our POP unit, or we're going to cut this, or we're going to cut that. It does eventually become noise, and that's kind of the way I walked in here with, I heard this last year, I heard this next year. And then I hear Chief Carrigan always make the comment, we will make do with what we have. And I believe even Chief Rhodes has made the same comment, we will make do with whatever we have. And I feel confident that they would. But then looking at this of two hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight thou, eight dollars, I do agree with what Ald, what Alderman Jettie said. I believe they could find it. But to what cost and to what end? And I can't sit back and allow these hate groups to just keep getting bigger and bigger. And as much as I agree with the increase in opioids and all the other drugs that are coming through here, the hate groups are the things that are scaring me the most right now. And I'm seeing them all over social media. I'm seeing them in, in pictures that people are proudly standing by them, those that are running for office and so on. It's becoming an acceptable norm, and I think we have to fight that on all levels. And I think even our fire department will be fighting those as well. So at this point, I've kind of been won over to passing this as it's been proposed. Thank you for giving me the time.
You're welcome. Anyone else? The motion is to restore the two hundred and forty-one, three hundred and thirty-eight, two hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Bottom line cut to restore the, no, to eliminate that. Sorry. Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please call the rule?
Alderman O'Brien.
No.
Alderman Clea.
Okay, I have to ask, now I'm a little confused. So this is to not give them the two forty-one?
The motion by Alderman Jettie was to subtract two hundred and forty-one dollars, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars from the golden rod copy by reducing Department one fifty, Police nine oh one two oh, bottom line by that amount, two hundred and forty-one dollars, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars, two hundred and forty-eight.
Two hundred and forty-one thousand.
Two hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Okay.
That's exactly what I said, Madam.
Then my vote is no, thank you.
Alderman Dowd.
No.
Alderman Karen.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Tenza.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
No.
Alderman Cleaver.
No.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
No.
Alderman Mulcher.
No.
You have one yay and ten nays. That motion fails. Do I have another motion? Alderman Jettie.
Sorry to waste everyone's time. But I would like to make a similar motion to to eliminate four hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one from the fire department's bottom line account number nine zero one two zero.
You've heard the motion, Alderman Dowd.
Yes, we're still keeping part-
Yes. We're still keeping part of the mayor's cut of $80,000. What we're keeping in the fireman's budget is their ability to keep a entire company of firemen online. And it's not as simple as, you know, that amount of money would pay for 16 people. It's not the way it's set up. Also, it's allowing for a halftime study in January for a safety officer in the marshal's office, which will be doing the twice-a-year required state inspections of schools. It hasn't been done. And from the discussions we've had in this construction project, they're finding a lot of things that should be found by this fire marshal. And we have 18 schools. That's 36 different inspections. Plus, this person is also going to be the person that manages capacity at different places, you know. We don't want to have, you know, someplace burned down and because nobody checked, they couldn't have that many people in it. And there are other, also, they do the training for the firemen that has been filled in by other people who aren't doing the full job that they should be doing because they have to do the training. Training is pretty essential. So it's something that existed before. It was cut from the Fire Department by the previous mayor to, for a budget to stay under the spending cap. And it is something that's required. So it's the 16, and, you know, let's hypothetically say they took, if they take a fire company offline, they take a truck offline. We're spending between $800,000 and $1,000,500 on trucks. We can have that truck sitting somewhere that can't be used? To me, that's physically irresponsible. And also, who's the first person to arrive if you have a medical emergency, a fire, or some type of other activity? It's always the Fire Department. They're all paramedics, and some of them are even more highly trained medically. If you're having a heart attack, you want to wait a few extra minutes for the ambulance to get there instead of the fire truck? I don't think so. I don't, you know. And, you know, we didn't give them all the money back that they had requested. But it makes sense to give them this amount of money to retain the fire company and hire this person that's critical, I think, to the school safety and the safety of many of our businesses in town.
Alderman Jettie.
So I won't repeat everything I said previously about trying to support the mayor and what I said about the Police Department pretty much applies to the Fire Department. I, you know, I understand, I haven't been around as long as you have, but when Alderman Cleve mentioned that, you know, every budget season, you know, any cut is going to be the end of the world. And I don't, I don't think so. A lot of these problems that you mentioned are problems that have existed for years. And, you know, I agree with you that they should be fixed. But picking this year, under the financial restraints that we have, to remedy those situations, you know, I just think that, you know, that it could be postponed. And I think that, you know, cooperating with the mayor's efforts to try to deal with this budget, you know, is the right thing to do. And I would have expected the Fire Commissioners in the Fire Department to, you know, to help out as well, not try to, you know, to solve problems that have existed. You know, the Fire Department is, I've heard the Fire Commissioners say, it's never a good year, and the chief say, it's never a good year for the Fire Department. But, you know, since I've been here, you know, the Fire Department always needs something. Every department needs something. I'm sure there are projects that the Department of Public Works would like to tackle this year. With a 6% increase, it would enable them to do that. And I understand, you know, about the, you know, the critical role that they play. And I, you know, they may not believe me when I say this, but I appreciate the firefighters. And I, you know, I'm trying to support them. But, you know, we have, you know, there's only so much money. And so I, you know, I'm sorry I can't fully support them to the degree that they would like on this issue. But that's why I made the motion.
Alderman Lopez.
So my impression is that these aren't just like to-do projects or like on the same level as maybe repainting a park or trying to redo a pool. Making sure that we have our schools inspected for fire safety is more leveraging assets against a large unmet need. So the fact that we've gone this far without being able, or we've had this many years without being able to address that issue, doesn't speak particularly highly of the governance that we were ranked with. It probably speaks more to the Fire Department compensating for their lack of resources by working overtime. And I'm pretty sure that was part of the chief's reference as well, that they're being spread increasingly thin. We have expressed a lot of pride in ourselves at growing the tax base and investing in new opportunities to build and grow our city. That comes with dangers. That comes with liabilities. There's a huge building that collapsed in Miami that speaks to the need to do regular inspections. When you don't do that, the human cost is high, the tragedy is enormous. But more specifically, the actions and the reputation and the performance of the Fire Department does specifically benefit people's insurance premiums. And that's a financial value. I think they've been asking for another fire station for years. We have not been able to even approach finding the resources for that. But being able to make sure that they're keeping up with the training of the Fire Department that they have without overextending their existing staff as it expands to respond to calls with taller and more complex buildings that we are authorizing, that's being frugal, that's being efficient, and that's being responsible. This year of all years doesn't mean that there's going to be less fire, just because Concord decided that they were going to play a little fast and loose with our ability to self-govern Nashville. There's been more fires, I believe. There have been more incidences. We just got through a major heat wave. And again, yesterday, we had a fire in the middle of a rainstorm. So I don't think that the bottom line of the Fire Department is going to be contingent to politics. I think we need to be looking at the needs that they present and what they're actually going to do with the money. And I don't think they're asking for anything ridiculous. If we have events and people are coming out of COVID-19, and restaurants are trying to recover from, you know, economic damage, and they want to bring in as many people as possible, we should probably have somebody there to manage that occupancy so that we don't have to call all the fire companies to deal with a major first aid disaster or, you know, a major event. Recently, the Fire Department has been called for mutual aid calls in some pretty big situations in other cities too, when those cities found that they didn't have the capability to respond themselves. And that's not something we should be entertaining. I think, again, some neighborhoods are different. Mine has a lot of older buildings. It has a lot of older citizens in those buildings. It may not have the same access to using stairs quickly, or mobility, or that kind of thing. So using the example from a couple of weeks ago, what was stopped immediately as a mattress fire could have been a devastating event, which, as a city, would have cost the taxpayers a lot more to respond to, and would have cost the families and associates of the people involved even more. So I support their request. And I don't think that the minimal impact that it would have on the individual tax bill is equivalent to the services that they offer. I think it's important that we actually make difficult decisions in terms of governance. And that doesn't just mean figuring out what we can cut and tell ourselves we made a good decision. It also means having the courage to say, there are some services that are very important. Their services are important, and we're going to match all the rhetoric we give in support of them with actual action, supporting them.
Alderman Cleve.
Thank you again, Madam President. I just want to make a comment. When we talk about the possibility of having to close a fire station, and knowing that all the reports of recent times are telling us we should increase by two fire stations, I get a little anxious. I know I had someone kind of joke to me and said, how would you like it if the Amherst Street Fire Department was one of those that had closed? And first I said, no, it's the most historic one. It's got to stay there. And I'll fight for that. But then I look back at recent times, within the past month, there was, in one 24-hour period, there were two fire in War III. One on Concord Street where the entire home is gone. That family has been displaced. And luckily, we had no damage to the buildings that were very close to it. And that was because we had fast response from the Amherst Street Fire Department. They're right there, right around the corner, and no other homes were lost. That one was sadly lost. And it's part of the historic district, and it brings a tear every time I drive by it. And then Layton Street. We had a fire there that ended up with a lot of water damage, and those people had to be displaced and so on. So I look at, that was a 24-hour period. One happened very early in the morning, and one happened in about the afternoon, I think it was. If that Fire Department had not been there, would we have lost more? Would we have lost lives? Luckily, those on Concord Street were not home at the time. So there were no lost lives. But there were houses that were right next to it. And I shudder to think of what would have happened. The homes on Concord Street are basically wood-based, and they go up like a, you know, a match, I guess you'd go, matchbox. And we have a lot of old homes, as Alderman Lopez had brought up, throughout our entire city, that are made of just wood base. And so, again, I came with the idea that, nope, we're not going to do this. I was of the same mindset that Alderman Jettie was. We're not going to increase this. And listening to the others speak and so on, I think we do need to give them the $418,000. So, thank you.
Alderman Schmidt.
Well, thank you, Madam President. The economy is cyclical. There are times when you really have to tighten your belt, and everybody suffers. There were, what, 10 years ago, 2010, the state also decided to tighten belts and hurt the city. And we had to tighten our belts. I wasn't part of this chamber at that time, but I sure remember it. I don't think this is the time to tighten the belt of the fire or the police. I really don't. I think that they're boots on the ground. They are the people who save lives. They're the ones that show up every single time. And if somebody has to wait an extra 10 minutes to get their registration done on their car, so be it. We can live with that for a little while. But we cannot have somebody with a heart attack waiting 10 minutes. That's just not, it's not the city we are. We have to be proud of the service we receive, and I personally am. Also, I don't think there's any fat in any of these budgets. We see to the penny what they plan on spending. We see to the penny what the state is demanding from us, what the requirements are that we have to live within. And there's no question in my mind that there is nothing that we can really cut without hurting ourselves. Now, the study that was done on the Fire Department really surprised me in a couple ways. Now, we know that there's buildings in tough shape for the Fire Department. We know they need updating. We know there's many things that we could do to improve. But something that really surprised me was the morale. I remember that being an issue. And it's easy to see why it's hard for the police or fire to feel that they are not important in the city. It's very easy when you sit and you listen to people say, well, you can cut out another $200,000 without really hurting anything. It's not the truth. You can't. This is important money for important service. And I really feel that taking this money out away from you is, it's an embarrassment to the city if we do that. I really feel that very strongly about it. And frankly, I pay taxes here too. So I'm not interested in raising my taxes any more than anybody else is. But I'm really grateful that you're here and listening to this. And thank you very much. Thank you.
Alderman Dowd.
Just two quick things. One, there are a number of things that the Fire Department could have asked for, especially as a result of that report. They're not asking for us to build another station right now, anyway, which would add a fire, at least one fire company. And now we're talking about cutting one. And the number of developments that have gone on in this past year, and are continuing to go on, with the same number of people they've had, unless we cut their budget and they have less people. You know, we've got a new high-rise going on School Street. On West Hollis Street, we have that wooden condo structure. The hangar building is being renovated, and that's an old building. And I don't know how many new houses have been built. I know when I was still in real estate, I sold a bunch of them. And there are, there are a lot of them. I would eventually guess it's in the hundreds in the last year. And more importantly, we're building a four-story new school down south. I want a fire truck there if we have a problem. Now, granted, we're going to build it so it's anti-fire, but you never know.
Especially if it doesn't have a road.
That would be difficult.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, again, just briefly, I think the difference in the money restored by the Budget Committee in the mayor's budget is, you know, really minimal to include it for the Fire Department. I just also wanted to point out that, you know, similar to what Alderman Schmidt was saying, you know, I think we should be, we should look at this a little differently and be proud of the money that we're funding for these departments. You know, again, police and fire are a source of pride for the Board of Alderman, the city. Certainly, we tout all their accomplishments and everything they've done over the last, you know, throughout their histories. And so it's, you know, again, a good investment. But I know that there were some concerns about how their budgets have increased over the last six years. You know, I went back and I looked at the numbers. And if you, if you take out the fringe benefits, which, you know, the departments really have no control over, and you look back at the Fire Department's budget over the last 10 years, yes, it has increased over the last five or six years. But over the last 10 years, it's only increased at a pace of 1.5% per year. So, you know, again, I think we should be proud that we are making the decisions to kind of restore their budget to where it should be or where it should have been all of the, all of the last years. And I hope that, you know, going forward, I think that the Fire Department as a liaison, I could say that, I think that they know that, you know, going forward, it's, their budget and these increases are not always going to be able to be what we've been able to, 3% and 4% that we've been able to give them the last several years. But really, what we've been doing is playing catch-up for the, you know, four years previous when their budget only went up, you know, about 1% a year. So, again, I hope that we can support this and keep the firefighters on the road and in their firehouses. Thanks.
Alderman Cleaver.
Thank you, Madam President. I've been impressed with these Budget Committee work with all the departments and their work. And I think we've done extremely well, especially Fire and Police. And I think we have the duty to pass this budget as is, without any cuts. It's already bare bones, if you will. And I think it's outstanding as it is. And we're very, very fortunate that we've been able to get it under control and keep it as low as it is. So I'm in favor of the budget as is, very strongly in favor of no cuts in passing our budget as it has been prepared. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Motion is to reduce the Fire Department line 90120 by $418,771. Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
No.
Alderman Cleaver.
No.
Alderman Dowd.
No.
Alderman Karen.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Tenza.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Nope.
Alderman Cleaver.
No.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
No.
Alderman Mulcher.
No.
You have one yay and 10 nays.
And that motion fails? Are there any further motions on the budget? Okay, the motion before us is to amend by adopting Resolution 21142.
To the golden rod copy numbers that I mentioned.
My roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
I just want clarification, I'm sorry. So we're proving for the $368,438,438 for the general fund appropriation and the $142,390, $142,390,499 to the general fund revenues, correct?
Yes.
Okay, then yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have 11 yays and 0 nays.
That motion carries.
Madam President, I think we're ready for the clerk to do a final reading on R21142.
Yes, I am.
Second reading of Resolution R21142, relative to the adoption of the fiscal year 2022 proposed budget for the City of Nashua General Enterprise and Special Revenue Funds.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have 11 yays and 0 nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 21142 is duly adopted as amended. Okay, period for general public comment. Mike? Jim Tolner?
Yes, I just want to, I just want to thank the mayor and the board for their hard work on this budget, and I'm sure you're very happy that this has been, this is resolved, and I appreciate the support. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Yes, Lori Ordolano.
Okay.
41 Burke Street, just a couple of things. You know, I want to remind you that when Mr. Alderman Tenza talks about the impact of a 4% increase on property valuation, you're failing to recognize that next year is a reassessment year, and we're going to get a new 2022 tax rate once Vision reassesses all the property. And we have not had really any information from the city that I know of that has talked about the impact in the balancing between the commercial and residential properties. I can tell you, looking at the abatements right now, there's a lot of big commercial abatements. I think the valuation is, for assessment reduction, is somewhere around $68 million. And I know the commercial properties during KRT's update were valued around $3.7 million, and residential was around $6.3. So, and we were able to balance that off 50/50, but you're seeing the commercial drop substantially more with potentially a higher vacancy rate. I know what the economy is doing when it comes to home prices, and I will tell you something, you've got a big issue coming your way with senior citizens, and I addressed this to you already, but the board ignored it in this budget. And your exemption program for senior citizens based on hardship for 75 and older is $224,000 is your max exemption. Well, when that was set, KRT in 2018, the average home price was $260,000. That means seniors could get a pretty good exemption at $224,000, and at 80 years or older, it was $280,000. But look at what's happened now, the average home price in Nashua this year, it's not even finalized, is probably closing in on $430,000 to $450,000. Your seniors are not going to get an exemption at all like they got. They're going to be paying on, they're going to be paying $224,000 of taxable income. And you had, according to your MS-1, you're giving $160 million in tax exemptions to senior citizens on your MS-1. That's primarily out of your residential total assessment of $6.3 billion. That's a substantial amount. And you, you know, so you've just swung a whole bunch of seniors out there, and that 4% increase on top of a Vision reassessment update is going to be a pretty difficult pill to swallow, and I wouldn't be surprised if you don't see
30 seconds.
the need higher. So I think the tax impact assessment was too superficial, and I think that the increase to this budget was unacceptable. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wishing to give comment? Seeing no one? Remarks play members of the board. Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, I want to thank the Budget Committee for all their nights out and their hard work on the budget. It's, of course, a tough year, but I've been dealing with the budgets in the city for 40 years. I don't remember one when we came in and said, "Man, this is a great year for the budget." I know there are ups and downs, but they're never above that line that says, "Hey, we got a great budget." I think that we have done a very good job protecting our police and fire departments, and in doing so, protecting the citizens and the taxpayers of the city of Nashua, where these services are critical, and the services aren't critical. You know, I have full respect for everybody who works for the city and support them wholeheartedly, and I applaud them for coming in at the numbers they came in at. Police and fire are extremely important. And it's not like these two groups were asking for all kinds of new things, no. They were trying to keep things pretty much as they've had them, and providing a great job to the city of Nashua. You know, I mean, as far as salaries, firemen, how many people do you know that run into burning buildings? How many people do you know that go under the concrete of a caved-in building to try and save people? That fired down in Massachusetts, 100 and some odd degrees out there, and the firemen are running into the building and coming out with heat exhaustion and ending up in the hospital. Firemen do a great job, police do a great job, and we can't shortchange them. And nobody likes to pay taxes. I think that goes without saying. And this year, if we had any cooperation with the state of New Hampshire, we wouldn't have had an increase. We may have even had a decrease, even with the additions we made. So that's what needs to be fixed, and I still want to see those people that run the state pension plan come down and talk to us.
Alderman Cleaver.
Thank you, Madam President, and I want to echo the words that Alderman Dowd said. I really would like to get the people from the pension plan, the retirement group, here to try to explain to us and the taxpayers here of Nashua why these numbers keep going up and so on. And I'd like to also thank the Budget Committee. You did a thankless job, and it truly is. And I wasn't able to attend all of them for various health reasons, but I have watched them all. And you, I don't want to say you fought amongst yourselves, but you discussed amongst yourselves.
Robust.
Robustly, yes. And everybody on both sides made very good points, and I think you did come up with a good budget, and I thank you for that. You made our job here a little easier because you ferreted it out during the meetings. I'd also like to just kind of comment again on that fire on Concord Street. When the fire happened, it was called in by the local ice cream truck gentleman who was going by and saw the smoke and called the fire. And as a result of that, he got stuck there. He could not leave because there were hoses all around him, and he made a bad situation good by giving the children who were being displaced out of those houses, and as they got out of school, gave them popsicles and different things to try to soothe them. He also gave popsicles, and I believe water, to the firefighters that were there. So instead of sitting there and being grumpy and so on, he reached out. I don't know this gentleman's name, but I'd like to publicly thank
Hazy Ice.
Was it, I'm sorry?
Hazy Ice. He lives in Ward 4.
Hazy Ice, who lives in Ward 4? But he helped out those in Ward 3, so I'd like to publicly thank him for that. And I want to make a reminder that 4th of July is coming up this weekend, and we are having a firework display at Home and Stadium, and I pray that that's where it stays. I know it won't, but I know there will be some private ones. Let's not put our firefighters and our police to any extra work. Keep them at home and where they belong, and please stay safe this weekend. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
Ironically, Hazy Ice could not join us for the Tree Streets Block Party because the fire department were helping us with the road closure, and he kind of got deflected a little bit. But we appreciate you, both of you. Nashua Fire actually helped us with our road closure and had to go respond to a fire, so the Nashua PD and their command center were surprisingly well-positioned to help as well. We had a really good event. I want to thank all the city departments that participated too in the Touch a Truck event, because there's a lot of city services that they don't really get a chance to meet the bus driver when they're not, like, hurrying on and off of it. They don't get a chance to talk about the token app, which is a really helpful way to be able to pay for transportation to and from things. Even the solid waste department was there, and demystifying sidewalk pickups and solid waste pickups and all that kind of stuff for residents is really, really helpful. I want to thank the organizers that worked with me, the, a lot of residents were contributing their time, really as a labor of love. One couple that's been volunteering regularly for years, the wife was in and out of the emergency room like three different times, they still found time to help. I, one of our food providers lost two close relatives in a week, and was pretty close to Reverend Perkins as well, and still made time to help. And just the amount of problem-solving and overcoming adversity that I saw just in organizing a simple street party was very inspiring. And we needed it, because we were coming out of COVID-19, we were originally planning this thing when we were still unsure of whether vaccines were going to be effective and all that kind of stuff, and people stuck to it. So I want to thank everybody who helped organize the Tree Streets Block Party. I do also want to comment a little bit on some of the public comment that's been made and the opinions that have been offered. I'm concerned about the ratio of private properties to commercial properties, residential properties to commercial properties as well, but I would point out that there was probably some role in how the residential properties were more intrusively and thoroughly assessed because of tireless advocacy on the part of a small group of people who are now going to present as though that had nothing to do with this sudden shift of ratios and how people's property taxes are going to be going up because their values, their houses were assessed at a higher value. People try to take on political positions, and they're not necessarily taking on any position of responsibility for the results of those actions, and it's frustrating to see. When people who are serving in the state legislature and do not live in Nashua take it upon themselves to modify our spending cap against the opposition of all of our elected officials that were sent to the House and using parliamentary tricks and maneuvers in order to achieve it, that is discouraging. It speaks to their moral character, it speaks to their credibility of their ideals, and it's definitely not going to reflect in how effective their overall governance is. If your platform politically has to be, "I'm going to sabotage other people to make them look bad so that I can look good by comparison," you're not doing anything other than tearing things down. So I applaud my fellow aldermen who have been focused during their terms here on building the city of Nashua up, being an inclusive place, being a welcoming city, working on development and forward-thinking, and creative ways to be economically responsible, to be fiscally responsible, to build the tax base, and to grow a city that I think we're all proud of. So thank you, everybody.
This side. Alderman Jettie.
Thank you, Madam President. So I want to thank my fellow aldermen for, you know, pointing out various errors in my way of thinking about trying to, you know, support the mayor in reducing the police and fire budgets. I, you know, I hope that with 4th of July coming, you know, I hope the police still respond to complaints from Ward 5 fireworks in spite of what I said tonight. And if there are any fires, I hope the fire department comes and doesn't cross our ward off the list. We don't have a fire station in Ward 5, so I hope that that doesn't deter them from responding if necessary. You know, we all, we all do what we think is best in the interests of the city, and you know, I, you know, even though we disagreed on these issues, you know, I appreciated your statements and your sentiments, and, you know, in the end, we all voted for the budget. So thank you.
Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to thank the mayor for the budget. I think he helped produce a nice, tight budget, and it was pretty amazing to see what happened. Thank you very much. I also wanted to thank the leadership of Alderman Dowd on our committee. It was, the work he has done on this, nobody understands how much he does to help create a terrific budget. Thank you very much. There's one more point I wanted to make up. I was watching the Board of Education the other day, and at the end of it, Sandra Zim took a moment to talk about the people who had come to complain about various things. That day, it was just about masks. And she said, "When we sit up here, we do a lot more than you would ever know. We pay attention to every aspect that we need to. You may come here just to talk about masks, but that's a tiny part, and we'd really like you to understand, if you want to be part of what happens, you need more than just one issue. You really need to think about the entire job that we do." I thanked her for that, because I don't think a lot of people realize that, yeah, it's a big issue to talk about the budget, but golly, you know, making sure somebody's stop sign gets put in place is really important to a lot of people too. And it's a terrific job that we get, yeah, it's a terrific job that we get to do to protect the citizens that we serve. We are public servants after all. This is a terrific job, and, you know, when I hear complaints about how we're doing so poorly, I just have to shake my head and think about Sandra Zim and thank her very much for making the point. Just one more thing, the people who were at the meeting that day, there was a lot of anger, and there was a gentleman there who was standing up in the back with his arms crossed, and you could feel that it was unpleasant, and it shouldn't happen. That's a business meeting. If there's comments that you need to make, you make a comment. We do that here, and when your comments are done, the business goes on. And I'm really very grateful for how this board manages that, and I think that the Board of Education is, is under a little stress right now, and we need to support people who are working on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman Cleaver.
Thank you, Madam President. Alderman Schmidt took a lot of my words, but I want to express my appreciation to the mayor and all the department heads for an outstanding job in the budget process, and especially also to Chairman Dowd and the Budget Committee for an outstanding job, very, very, very well done. Many, many hours of work to do that and to get to where we are right now. And also, lastly, I'd like to wish everybody a very safe and happy 4th of July.
Thank you. Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Thank you, Madam President. I too like to echo that, the mayor's
I too like to echo that, the mayor's budget, as well as Alderman Dowd, thank you. And I too like Patricia Cle, I mean Alderman Cle, came here, not sure how I wanted to truly vote on this, but after hearing all the testimonies and realizing that everything that was being said truly was true, you know, you couldn't deny that. We do have the best in both the fire department and our police department. So I too changed and I voted yes, so I'm happy. And I have two announcements, if you don't mind me.
Yep.
Okay. Saturday, with the Black Heritage Trail of New Hampshire, the New Hampshire Outreach of Black Unity and the Greater Nashville Area Branch of the NAACP, we will be celebrating the reading of Frederick Douglass' speech at Saturday, July 3rd at 12 o'clock, probably go to about 1:30 at the library on the Commons. And last but not least, for those that don't recognize or don't know, Reverend Dr. Bertha Perkins passed last Tuesday, the founding pastor of New Fellowship Baptist Church at 50 Ash Street. And we will be celebrating her wake on Friday, July 9th at 5:30 until 8:00 at 50 Ash Street. However, the funeral service will be Saturday morning at 12:00 PM at the first church at the top of the hill in Nashua. I think that's Concord and Main Street at 12:00 PM. And we will be having a repass and that will be brought up or announced later as to where that might be. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think Alderman Dowd, excuse me, Madam President, Alderman Dowd did bring up a good point. Some of the emails that I have gotten have come up and said, oh, the pension system, I don't believe in the, you know, the rollbacks that the state of New Hampshire has done. Folks, the current delegation from the City of Nashua that represent, and I'm proud to be with them, up at the State House fought hard this year to represent Nashua against a pretty difficult tide. The current wasn't with us. But it seems like there's been a lot of emails not really believing that. So I think in defense of the mayor, what the mayor says is 100% true. So I think we need to make the people aware that what, you know, we're not claiming the boogeyman is in the room. He is there. And I agree with Alderman Dowd. So I would like to make a formal request. It is summertime, that we contact New Hampshire Retirement System, see if we can have a representative, perhaps maybe Marty Collin could come down and give a presentation to this board, advertise it so that the citizens can see that we're not being Chicken Little and saying the sky is falling, that you can hear it right from the horse's mouth and I think it's high tide. And Madam President, I'm willing to work with you on that if you so wish. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. I would just like to congratulate the city on being the fourth best-run city in the United States. However, I think Alderman Jettie sells himself and the rest of us in this room short when he doesn't include all of us in that process. We help shape and form the policy decisions that go on in this city. So the mayor does a great job, his staff does a great job, but we do too, so.
So don't be lazy. Keep doing a good job.
That's all I have. Committee announcements. Alderman Karen.
Yes. Next Tuesday, the 6th, at 7 o'clock, Personnel Administration has two public hearings, one on the gambling and the other one increasing the members of the Health Department Board. And then we will take up the legislation concerning the police commissioners. So, thank you.
Any other committee announcements? Seeing none, we have a motion.
Madam President, we'd like to make a motion that the July 1st, 2021 special meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned by roll call.
It is to adjourn. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher.
Yes.
You have 11 yays and 0 nays.
We are adjourned at 10:50. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate your hard work.
Happy 4th.